All right, Quiche Atkins.
What do you want?
Quiche Atkins.
Huh? Shut up.
Call the meeting to order. Um, for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion based on the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, Dash 3711. We're going to closed session to discuss A1 Personnel Matters, A5 Industrial Business Prospects, A7 Legal, and A8 Legal. First legal is discussion with legal counsel staff about probable litigation. The second legal, we, I don't believe we've ever had two legals.
(laughing).
Consultation in legal, a little about employment retained by a public body regarding special legal matters. So, two separate legals. Is there anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that those two separate legals were divided to us by our legal counsel. It wasn't a mystery.
I'll second your motion.
Motion in a second.
I'll explain when we get there.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
At the last meeting, I asked for some concern about going into closed session. And I'd just like to ask some questions for clarification, perhaps Mr. Campbell can help with that. In doing a little bit of research, and I certainly am just now beginning to try and get familiar with this whole process, uh, but from the FOIA council, it talks about there are three components. And Jeff, you already know this, the subject of the meeting, the purpose of the meeting, and the citation for the applicable reason that we're going into closed session. And in looking back at the same slide, and looking at some of the cases, cases that have been reviewed, that sometimes were a little vague at stating, like for example, personnel. In some of the examples they gave, it was actually, you needed more of a description. You just couldn't cite the thing that allowed you to go in to that. So that's where some of my hesitation is and some of my clarification that I need.
I understand where you're coming from. Judy, I think there's a, there's a, an unsettled area of the law right now. And part of that issue right now is, could well be dealt with by the Supreme Court in the case involving library. But the question is, is to what specificity you have to recite the reasons for your entry into closed session. If you read, if you read the code section literally, uh, the code, of course, is adopted by the General Assembly, and it sets for specific criteria for the entry into closed session. The FOIA council, uh, and, and for good reason probably, has tried to amplify and define what that means exactly. Uh, there's one specific case, I think, out of the Circuit Court of the city of Virginia Beach, maybe, or somewhere in eastern Virginia, that, that, that has held that basically you gotta go more than just citing the statute. Okay? Understand, Circuit Court opinions, while, while certainly instructive to other Circuit Courts around the state, are not mandate, they're not mandatory authority. So until there's a clear and unequivocal, uh, statement by the General Assembly as to what's required, uh, or until an appellate court, such as the Supreme Court, has made a ruling as such, it's sort of a gray area of the law right now. So historic, what, what you see in, in your recitation here is historically what this county has done since way before any of us were here. So I understand that, you know, you think it needs to be amplified further about which areas, which personnel, and what departments, and what areas.
Well, it's not so much that I do, it's just, you know, in, in looking at some of these criteria, but, so I don't want to belabor, because I know we want to get to any. So for right now, and I'm in the process of trying to learn more about it, um, I'm gonna, when we vote, I'll, I'll vote according to how I feel like I should.
Right.
But thank you, Jeff.
Well, and let me say this too, because the law has, has, or is going to change come July 1.
Yeah.
And I don't know how, and that's something we need to speak about in the future. I haven't yet, uh, brought it up because the governor has yet to sign the bill, is my understanding. But the law, a, a bill has passed the General Assembly that would in fact require, uh, or could impose personal liability
Yeah.
upon each board member for failing, uh, to specifically certify the reasons why you believe matters that were discussed in closed session went beyond what the stated purpose was.
Yeah, you have to say the substance that you're.
Well, not yet you don't.
(laughing).
But, but if, but if this bill gets signed by the governor, you might well have to do that. So, and I understand, uh, although I wasn't here, I understand that in the last, uh, previous closed session, that you, uh, had had concerns about the entry into closed session and then the certification thereafter. So.
For example, Jeff, and like I said, I don't, I know we've got a lot of business to do, and I don't want to belabor this and make it later for any of us. But for example, to say that we're going in to discuss personnel, that it maybe should say that we're going in to discuss applicants for exposition. And then when we go into closed session, if there were only, and then we say, well, there were 12 applicants, we're gonna interview six, that probably that wasn't appropriate for closed session because it was not violating anybody's privacy. Do you see what I'm saying?
Uh, well, I mean, I, I, I think that's a, an arguable position, but that's, you know.
But anyway, there's a lot, and I'll, I'll, I'll ask you more about it probably, probably.
That, that's fine. And, and let me tell you, what I'm, what I've tried to give you all is the best legal advice I can give you as to what the law currently requires. Historically, like I said, I'm not deviating from what John Tate did or, or anyone before him. I mean, this is the way that Smith County has historically entered closed sessions. So if, if, if the Supreme Court changes and mandates something differently, then, then great. But, but as of right now, all you have to do is, is recite, uh, the reason you're entering closed session and recite the applicable code session, so code section for doing so. That's what the code requires. So in any event, I appreciate that, and I, maybe we'll get greater direction in the future. Right now, we just don't have that.
Thank you.
So have we taken a vote to?
No, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Going to closed session?
Yes.
All right, we're in closed session.
Based on the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2, Dash 3711, to discuss A1 Personnel Matters, A5 Industrial Business Prospects, A7 Legal, and A8 Legal.
Okay. Motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? But we'll open our meeting back up. Um, first thing, we've got the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And we've got the invocation by Ms. Tindra Hayden and the pledge by Lynn Garrett.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. Fill us with your grace as decisions are made that affect all the citizens of this county. Please remind us that all we do and that all we accomplish is for your glory. We ask these in your name.
Pledge of allegiance, tender flag of the United States of America. The true God for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the freedom of God.
Thank you, ladies. We don't have a room full, but welcome everybody. I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
And the additional agendas, please. Motion in a second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Minutes of the, motion for the minutes of the previous meeting from, uh, February 12th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes, any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, there's just one area that, um, I think needs clarification.
Okay.
And it's where, at the last meeting, it states that I asked why closed session was not recorded. And actually, my question was that we didn't have minutes, so.
That this need to be, you just want?
Just that, little alteration.
So, Mr. Chairman, will we consider adopting the minutes with that correction? If appropriate.
That's.
Is that satisfactory?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Can we?
I'm making a motion.
I'm in that.
With the recommended correction.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Financial status, Mr. Carter.
Board, somewhere in front of the get a lot of papers, there's a lot of much papers. Financial report. Front page should have a revenue summary. If you look at that front page, Fund One is the first identifiable. If you go down to the year-to-date column on that, on that front page, which is actually Page Two, Page One is just a, actually a waste of paper, nothing on it. The year-to-date column under Fund One is 23,407,390,02. If you look at the, uh, cross to the balance and the uncollected on your revenue, you're, you're close. You've got about a million dollars left in revenue. And you collected roughly about 96%, 95% of that revenue associated with Fund One. The next, uh, one, two, three, four, five pages are, are summaries of the other funds within the county. Same, same concept down the year-to-date, cross to the uncollected. You get to Page Six, which is a total of revenues from all the funds down the year-to-date column. Uh, you'll see 59,883,219,96. You go over to the uncollected, uh, there's a, there's a balance of 28,474,931,04. And, uh, basically, you've got about 32% of uncollected. Uh, you're eight months deep into your year. This, this, uh, report calculates, uh, everything through payroll. Payrolls yet to come out, so you're right around that 33% mark, sort of follows in line with that. Your next, uh, report is, is the expenditure report for the same total, total cycle. Page One on the expenditure report, uh, year-to-date, 14,592,060,55 at the bottom of the, of the page. You have 10,214,235, 45 remaining, uh, and you have 41%, so you're a little better on your expenditures, uh, on the remaining portion of that. The next two, three, four, actually it's on Page Five, the two, three, fours are summaries of those expenditures for the same funds. It's Page Five, uh, that's a total expenditure of all funds. And your year dates, you have 51,924,895,27, and unencumbered, a 36,433,255,73. You got roughly about 41% remaining. So your, your revenues, uh, totals, on, on total revenues exceed your total expenditures by 6,958,324,69. The next page should be, uh, the standard report with the departments listed. And that just gives you a, a snapshot of what the expenditures were a year ago in March compared to this year. If you go down to the bottom, that's the summary of all, uh, you'll see that actually in March of 19, the total is 998,408,15. Total a year ago in 18 was a million, 129,132 difference. We're 137,2197 less in expenditures, uh, throughout the same month, a year apart. The next report, the print gets smaller, uh, one day I'm gonna have to blow this print up a little bit. But that's basically, uh, dates all the way back to 2011, '12. It comes through the budget cycles, uh, for each respective year. I always make the comparison off the last two to look at where we were on 17, 18. A difference in deposits and expenditures in 17, 18 was 8,872,891,57. Difference in deposits and expenditures in 18, 19 is 8,594,202,03. So there's 278,689,54 less that's accounted for on that report. That brings us to the two reports prepared by the Treasurer's Office. The first one is voluntary county expenses and appropriations. This again is a snapshot comparing, uh, last year to this year very quickly. 18 is on the left, 19 is on the right. If you look at the bank balance and CD investment amounts in 18, it was 13,817,227,62. And 19's 14,057,496,0. So we're 240,00262,98 ahead, uh, this time last year. Deposits in 18 was 5,582,502 and a quarter. And 19 was 5,54932,84. So we're actually down 41,569,41 in deposits. Expenses in 18, 6,116,537,73. And 19, 6,287,814,89. So we're up 171,277,16. Brings you to your subtotals. In 18 was 13,283,192,14. In 19, 13,310,608,55. So we're a plus 27,416,41. We get into the unspent. A year ago in 18, we had a total unspent of 684,174,28. This year, we have a total unspent of 584,522,522,76. So we're 99,651,52 less in unspent, and that gets us to our balance. Balance a year ago was 12,599,017,86. Balance this year is 12,726,085,79. So you're 127,067,93 ahead of where you were this time last year. The second page of that is, uh, just a continuation. It identifies what the unspent appropriations that I mentioned on the previous, how those break down between Social Services, County School, and Capital Outlay in General County. And the third page of that report is the Water and Sewer Balance and the Uncollected Taxes. The final portion of your report is Treasurer's Accountability. And those, uh, those numbers indicated there are up-to-date accountings of the various funds and activities the county has with the bank. I ask that you look over those, and if you have any questions, uh, I'll do my best to answer them. Today's total appropriations, uh, I have somewhere, I have to use my eyes to look at. It was, uh, 6,375,000. Well, I'm getting bad eyes, I can't see. So, uh, uh, to answer the question, only appropriations for today, you had sufficient lines to place consideration on the appropriations.
Thank you. Any questions? Trying to get to the appropriations right now. General County Accounts Payable Listing is 998,408.15. Payroll, 684,288.39. Autograph Rule Development, 8,974. AEP Century Link Bills, 25,000. County Administration Fund, 5,000. A total county appropriations plus carryover, 1,695,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Social Services, March 13th to March 31st of 19, 350,000. April 1st through April 9th of 19, 60,000. Total Social Services of 410,000.
So moved. Second.
Motion in two seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? School Operating Fund Instruction, 3,200,000. Administration Attendance and Health, 120,000. Transportation, 190,000. Facilities, 350,000. School Food Service, 340,000. Technology, 70,000. For a total school operating fund of 4,270,000.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
If you look at the two requests we received from the school, under instruction, it was 2, 2.6 million and 600,000. Yet we're showing, okay, that, that makes sense. I see what you're doing there. No problem.
Okay. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? EDA Fund Four, 132.35.
So moved. Second.
More discussion? All those in favor? Recovery Court Fund, 749,209,097.
So moved.
209.97, did I say that wrong? Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
More discussion? All those in favor? Share Fund Seven Forty Eight, 1,200.76.
So moved.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Got that down. I'd like to open citizens' time. Uh, Mr. Robert Owens. State your name and address for the rectifier.
Oh, Owens. Yes, I seen Mr. Campbell last night.
Yes, sir.
Maybe a little encouragement from the board, he can follow up with his headwork. Uh, Mr. Rouse, where they, they're still doing exactly what they've been doing all along, they have a slowdown. They threatened another neighbor, he is filed, charges him, oh, Louisiana. And, uh, tried to run him off his property. I mean, I don't think the board realized, and I know that the board don't, can't do that so much. But the board can bring pressure by the ones that can, make sure they're doing their job to get it done. But the board don't realize just how dangerous these people are. I mean, there are convicted felons, abduction, drugs, assault, there's a list a half a mile long that they went through. And they are doing their best to run anybody and everybody out there. They put up gates, locked the railway off for landowners, can't get to their own property, threaten them when they're coming near. You get them here to the front door, to the property line, and they're throwing a fit, you know, that you don't have any business there. If these people are not doing something that they want to hide, then they wouldn't care whether you were up next to the property line or a half a mile away. But, I, I mean, they're, they're dangerous. You never know what they're gonna do, and if we don't do something, somebody will get hurt. Somebody will get hurt bad. It's, you're taking your life in your own hands if you go down there. You never know when they're gonna start shooting. I know they're not supposed to own guns, but criminals don't own guns, you know? But, I mean, like I say, you're taking, you're taking the chances if you go down there. And, uh, they've got community, I don't know what you call that, upset, scared to death, afraid to go outside. And these people, right up down the road, stop in front of people's houses, scream, holler, revving engines up, spin their tires. It's, uh, I, I mean, they, every vehicle they've dropped this, it's got farm used tags on it. They've never been taken for any of that. We try to get state police to, and I don't know, they just don't have the time or, or what the deal is. But, uh, I mean, we're trying to do this legally. Everything we've done, we're trying to do legally. I spent almost 14,000 dollars on attorney fees, legal fees, and investigating fees, and participating in another 14,000, I need to. But one way or the other, this is gonna come to an end. And, uh, any help the board can give, we appreciate it.
I, I'm not, I'm just, no, I'm not heading on at you.
I know. I, I, I know.
I know where you're coming from. Can we address anything?
I mean, it's a matter of public record, we have deposition scheduled in the case for April the 4th.
Okay, all right, well, we didn't, I didn't know that.
That's what I was hoping that you would be able to be told today.
Well, we're supposed to be in, we're in the 26th of April. So, uh.
So I just.
As long as we're headed in the right direction, then I'm satisfied for a little while.
There's action being pursued, it, and.
I know you're getting hard on.
No, sir, I, I, that's, that's what we're here for. And I, I sympathize with what you're going through, not to the degree of the suffering that you guys are feeling. I, I totally understand that. I just, there's an obligation for the county and, uh, and, um, um, I don't wanna say a limit to the county, but there are avenues that we need to pursue, and we have taken steps and actions that hopefully can, can get some.
We just tell them up here to make sure they don't get slipped back on the back burner. I know that's probably more important than.
And, and, and I, I know that it would be nice if we fixed that last week, but, um, I, I just ask that, that you do be patient, because we are on the, on the track. It's, it's just not a, if I was living in the circumstances you're talking about, I would be very, very frustrated. So don't hesitate to come and express concerns, but we haven't turned a deaf ear to it. I do want you to know that, and.
We appreciate that. I say we appreciate your help you give, and, uh, and anything we can do to help you, Bob, we'd be glad to.
And I, I think once we get to where we need to be, or, or we'll have information, I think if we could reach out to you and you could let your neighbors know, or, um.
We'd be glad to.
Bill, I know you were wanting to.
Well, I, you've addressed the issue, and I just wanted, I wanted you to be aware that he is back at Alsefels now, which he was doing a very important job, which he steps anywhere on. But they've been, that, they've been taken care of. Some legality, he give you what's public information, and, you know, that, it's, it's in the mood. So I guess, the only other thing I'd have to say, if you've got some kind of evidence that along down the road that, wait a minute, let me think. They're still taking money or violating, doing something, they had to be violating something.
Yeah.
Some of this stuff that gets into farm tags, and some of the stuff that may be illegal, I mean, the board has a different business.
Well, I understand that.
The only thing we control out there is the zoning itself, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we have any evidence, we'd be glad to give Mr. Campbell access to it, you know, and we've got, uh.
Well, that would be my only advice to you. If he needs you, he'll call you, or he may be wanna, if you're seeing something that's real evident that zoning is being violated, it might be smart to keep out, because they may need it.
We've sent 99% of it to Mr. Williams. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, I mean, anything that you can, I mean, I'm sure, uh, please, we'd be glad to send it to you, has sent it to you.
I've seen.
But, uh, like I say, anything we can do to help, I'd be glad to. We appreciate y'all, we appreciate what you're doing, appreciate your patience with us.
No, no problem. It's, it's, it is just a procedure, but we're sympathetic to it, and, and to what extent we can do, we will do.
No, I understand.
Mr. Owens, I don't, I'm gonna give you, I just wanna say one more thing. I know that how nervous I am and how I'd be if I was out there, but I drive by a spot every day going through Rich Valley that where legal takes so long, if somebody's lost their life because of a competition. All I'm asking y'all is be patient, give us time to work. Do something you can't reverse, you know what I'm doing?
Everything we've done, we've tried our best to do, and continued to do so. Have no other intentions any other way.
No, yeah.
But, uh, I mean, I will protect what's mine and protect my family, but, uh, and hope it never has to come to that. But, uh, uh, like I say, it's just a, a chance you take when you go there, is that, uh, you're not gonna have an encounter. you're not gonna have an encounter, and, uh, you know, and it escalated into something else.
Keep your head and be patient.
Alright, thank you all.
Thank you, sir. That's all that signed up for Citizens Time, is there anybody else wishing to speak at Citizens Time? Nobody wishing to speak, all, all who's citizens time?
I'd like to make a request, if this is the proper place, I don't know, and send you through the financials. Is there any way we could get a TV monitor or something, so those handouts that we're looking at, the audience could see the numbers sort of read along with us, as opposed to sitting there and being lost, blank looks on there? I think it'd be good for them to be able to see the same handout, and we could just put it up on a TV monitor on the other side of the post there or something.
Yeah, there's actually some plans in the upcoming budget for that, if we need to do that, and more quick to page and...
I don't know, quickness is, I just think it'd be nice for them to be able to see what we're looking at, and be able to read along with us to a certain extent.
We're moving forward, brother, we're moving forward.
What about giving them a copy till then?
I don't know if you wanna give, I just, just so they have something to look at, I think's better than nothing at all.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Charlie, is that also including everything, like in our packet as we discussed?
I just think I'd leave that up to the board chairman and administrator to make that decision, what needs to be shown.
This is public information, right?
Absolutely.
Is that correct, that the minutes that we get is, is available to the public for inspection?
Everything that's in that packet is available.
So, I, I think sometimes, like committee reports and things like that might be good too, but...
I just think as much as we can, we need to let them be able to read along and see what we're looking at, and what the whole context of what we're looking at looks like. And I don't know if we wanna kill that many trees with giving a handout, but if they want one, they can always ask for it, but I think at least putting it on the screens is a step forward. Happy to hear we're doing it.
Well, we, we've got some, I mean, this room is challenged to start with, because you have all these wonderful columns in here that you have to peek around and, and talk about, but we've got a, a whole new update, hopefully through the budget process, that'll put more than just one.
Good.
Ms. Sandy Brown, Executive Director, Mount Rogers Community Services Board.
Oh, you bet, you bet.
Howdy. How are you today?
I'm great. Thank you for coming today.
Absolutely.
I'm here with Sarah Beener, and lovely to meet you. It's required for us, if we go for the name change, to graduate the district director and, uh, to do that. Across the state, most community services are taking out the work board. Some are going to behavioral health, and some are going to interstate community services. Reason for that, the board, the board board uses our individuals, they don't understand what that is, it makes it more formal, we just wanted to understand, we're providing services for them, for the community, and that's the reason why we're moving in that direction. Do you have, do you have the resolution?
We do have, we've got a resolution in front of us, and, um, if I could get, somebody wanna read that for the record, or after your presentation, or, I'm not rushing you. If you wanna continue, continue, and then we'll read the resolution.
I, I'm just here to answer questions.
I like your way.
I viewed it in the packet, and I have no reason, no problem making recommendations to press the reading, and just approve the resolution as presented.
My second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? You've read your resolution, and it's, there you go.
I would thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate all of you, Michael Carter in particular, he's a great partner.
Wanna go to, uh, some continued items, Michael, or jump ahead to some new business stuff? We're a little ahead.
Uh, we could probably, I don't see Charlie Harrington out there anymore. Uh, we could probably go to the consideration of the resolution for Trooper Dow.
Okay, on page twenty-eight of your packet.
We're all, we're all, unfortunately, been made aware of Trooper Dow's in the line of duty, fatality.
Yes, sir.
I know that when that occurred, it deeply touched not only those of us here, but everyone in the community. I know that we, we each felt that in our own ways. Part of what, you know, honor and, and the moral of Trooper Dow, I think members of the board will remember, that we actually did a phone poll to consider naming the interstate bridge there, Chilhawley, after Trooper Dow. And at that point in time, that was a needed act by legislation to have that consideration moved forward. Now, that, that has happened, and the reason that you have an actual resolution here, in front of you, is that this is the final piece of the puzzle that goes into that file.
I was just gonna say, I would like this resolution read aloud, if we can.
I'd be glad to do that. Naming of the interstate bridge over White Top Road as the Trooper Lucas B. Dow Bridge, whereas Trooper Lucas B. Dow, Smith County, Virginia, twenty-eight, died in the line of duty on February fourth, twenty nineteen. Whereas Trooper Dow heroically gave his life in the line of duty on February fourth, twenty nineteen, surrounded by teammates of the Division Three Tactical Team. Trooper Dow graduated from Chilhawley High School and earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Rattler University. Trooper Dow graduated with a one-twenty-second basic session for the Virginia State Police in twenty-fourteen, and later in twenty sixteen, became a member of the Division Three Tactical Team. And whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors humbly recognizing the lasting impression Trooper Dow made on his fellow men and women in uniform, friends, family, and members of the community, and will be forever remembered for his great strength of character, tenacity, valor, and loyalty. And now therefore be it resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors, that hereby request, the Commonwealth Transportation Board, consider approval to name the interstate bridge over White Top Road as the Trooper Lucas B. Dow Bridge, in memory of Trooper Dow. And be it further resolved, the Smith County Board of Supervisors request the appropriate signs, as directed by a department, be installed, calling attention to this designation, and will assume the costs for the fabrication and installation of signs for this name.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would approve the resolution.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Go ahead and do the next one. Are you gonna wait till...
Uh, the, the pre-disaster probably need, Charlie Harrington here. We can do any one on page two, proclamation. If you'd like for me.
Okay, I'm sorry, get to my right page. Uh, proclamation of March colon cancer awareness month.
Chairman, this is just a request, it came in to recognize March as colon cancer awareness month. And you have a, basically a proclamation on page thirty, that I'll, if you grant me, I'll read very quickly.
If you would, please.
Whereas the county of Smith celebrates month of March as colon cancer awareness to bring greater awareness to colon cancer. Whereas colon cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And whereas one in twenty people will develop colon cancer, and every ten minutes, a life is lost to the disease. And whereas this year alone, one hundred and forty-two thousand new cases of colon and rectal cancer will be diagnosed in America, and nearly fifty thousand deaths are expected. And whereas a simple screening test is recommended to individuals over age fifty, and those with a family history to help combat the disease. And whereas Smith County, Virginia, has joined with the colon cancer alliance to increase screenings and save lives in Smith County, Virginia, and across the country. Whereas education and increased awareness can help inform the public of methods of prevention and the early detection of colon cancer. And whereas we recommend a screening, this cancer can be caught early when treatment is most effective. Whereas declaration of the month of March as colon cancer awareness month will help bring greater awareness to the disease and the importance of being screened. And now therefore, I do proclaim the month of March twenty nineteen to be colon cancer awareness month in the county of Smith, and encourage all individuals to work together to promote awareness and understanding of colon cancer and the need for screening to eradicate the disease.
It's a pleasure, the board. Move to, to the proclamation as presented.
We need to correct this down to a month.
Match. Oh, yeah, the last paragraph, the month of match.
I'll second.
Do we know?
Motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion? All those in favor? Consider setting the hearing for the VDOT six-year plan, pages thirty-one and thirty-three.
Yes, sir. Uh, it's time to move. The county has asked to, uh, consider a six-year plan. The advertisement is, is displayed on page thirty-one. Pages thirty-two and thirty-three are, are the items identifiable before that public hearing. VDOT asked the county to post this notice and set that public hearing, so today, I'm asking the board to consider setting the public hearing, uh, the six-year plan at five thirty on April ninth, twenty nineteen.
Okay with that one?
I'm glad to have that date for the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second, any more discussion? Just Heather Wright, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, if you would, please come up. Um, I know we had our opportunity last month, and someone wasn't feeling very well, and, you go ahead and make your presentation, then we can add on to it, so thank you.
Well, this little girl here is very dear to my heart, um, and my affairling, and she started a blanket ministry called It Takes Just More. Um, she did this back in the winter months when we were doing our Sanizales program. She reached out to me, her mother and father did, about wanting to do something for our community, and asked how she could. A girl would ask at Christmas what she would like for Christmas. She went back to her room, and God had told her, and put it on her heart, that she did not want nothing for Christmas, but wanted to give back to her community for Christmas. She still did not get nothing for Christmas, but gave back to her community. On Sanizales, that year, where we distributed presents to the families and communities in need, um, she distributed blankets, and she asked one simple question, and I was she was like... Um, she also did this to District Three as well, she provided them with blankets to give for the other days of the Christmas season. Um, you're still, you're still doing it, alright? She still puts blankets all year long. Um, different organizations have donated several different blankets, and different things. Anything you wanna add?
We, we as a board of supervisors are, it's, it's so refreshing to see the positivity in you, and you bring that forward and share with us. Um, I, we all, I think all of us asked last month, when you were unable to attend, to see if you wouldn't have an opportunity to come back and be in front of us. So, as a board of supervisors, we, we would like to present you with a certificate of recognition, of recognition, um, for selfless act of kindness in your community service project. And it says, "Just takes one blanket ministry." So, I'd like to stand and applaud you, and then I'll give you the... So, again, thank you only on behalf of the Smith County. I love a good positive note. Um, we are, I think... We're, we're up, up on our time things, we've got several other in the audience, and some addressed issues to, to go over, we're gonna take a break for a few minutes, and we'll be back in just a second. Call and meet back to order. Since we've got a population of the room for the, we're gonna go to the Saltwell Rescue Squad update, Joe Arnold.
Good evening, board. Um, my name's Joe Arnold, I'm the captain and operation manager of Saltwell Rescue Squad. As you was made aware, last month, that the financial status of Saltwell Rescue Squad is near empty. As of yesterday, about one o'clock, I was informed by our treasurer that we have financially enough money to operate rest of this week. I have come up with a small little packet for y'all to show the changes, can I approach your body, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you can.
Of the changes that we have tried to enact out of the squad, also our financial status report for the last quarter of last year, so you can see how the money was spent, and where it goes. Also, just the total call volume of what we had for October of last year through March the first of this year. Today, I come to you and request, uh, emergency funding to continue the operations of Saltwell Rescue Squad. I do know that the RFPs are being worked on, or will be proposed, Mr. Carter, Saturday, is that still correct? Will go out on Saturday. And there will be some time before the proposals will be back in and looked at. As a community citizen, and outside of the captain of the squad, I see a dire need for the squad to be continued, to be funded, to provide care for the citizens of the Saltwell community. We service approximately one-fifth of the population of, of Smith County, we service the largest territory of Smith County. I feel that if you will look at the third page, for the past five months, we had a total of three hundred and twenty-one calls. We answered all of them besides ten, most of those ten calls were second calls that we cannot get to. I think we have really made a stride towards answering the calls, considering where we was at this time last year. And I do believe our call volume, I know that is representative of Chilhawley as a dairy agency, but I do feel that that call volume would overwhelm Chilhawley and their volume. I have not spoken with Chilhawley, I haven't seen them here tonight, Mr. Haines, I tried to reach out to him yesterday, but he was out of town. I know they have downsides there, department of two ambulances. I know over the past week, just between our calls and Saltwell's, Saltwell's calls and Chilhawley's calls, that we have been in Chilhawley to help them answer calls because they was maxed out. Same thing, they have been in Saltwell to help answer our calls because we couldn't get out on them. So, just by that, just by the past week, the volume of calls overwhelmed what one agency, and what two agencies could handle, we had to share. We both had to help each other. If you take away Saltwell, you've got one agency trying to cover what two barney can cover. I do understand that the county is financially strapped, financially tight, that this is something... something that, as you see with the budget for the last quarter, that we have not overspent. We have, our oldest, our newest truck's nine years old. So, we don't have new trucks, new equipment. We're still operating on stuff from two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. We have tried to maintain our equipment to the best of our ability. Our equipment is today just as good as anybody else who may want to be the newest brand out there, but it still gets the job done. Another thing to take in consideration as I look at this, reflecting back on Chill Hallie, is our average turnaround time for a call is two hours and fifteen minutes. Yes, it's shorter if we're in the town limits of Saltwell, but when we get up into our area series up near the Blaine County line, we're talking a greater amount of time. Not only is that a long time to turn that call around, but the next agency getting there, you're talking about adding anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes to that response time, depends on which, if it comes from Marion across sixteen, if it comes out of Chill Hallie. This past week, we've had two episodes that come to mind that ten minutes would make a difference in life or death. Two overdoses that Saltwell Rescue Squad was able to respond to and give treatment to the patients. But if they had been delayed by ten minutes, they probably would not be here today, but they are still in the community. I understand that we're at a time that it's hard to decide on what to do. And as I go, we move forward, I would ask you that as the RFPs are considered, not only for my department, but for all the departments in this county, that once the volunteer rescue squad goes away, they'll never be back. Once you privatize this county or any department or part of this county, you'll never get a rescue squad back. Once you privatize it, that contract price will guarantee to go up. I'm sure, positive, that you're going to get some of these RFPs, it's going to be pretty low, looks pretty good. But just remember, once you lose the rescue squads, you're forever committed to a private agency. That private agency or agencies that bid, their price will continue to go up. I've spent majority of my career, thirty years, with a private agency. I understand how they work. So, I, I, I've seen it, I've been part of it when they have bidded on other areas, seen how it works, know how their game plan works. That's why I came to you tonight. I'm requesting twenty-five thousand dollars a month. As you will see, we have made changes to how we pay. We have went from an hourly rate to a compensated per shift, which falls in line with some other departments in this area. What that allows, that will cut out all overtime, nobody, I will not be paying out overtime. That allows me to be able to project what our monthly salaries are going to be at the beginning of the month versus at the end, because I won't have the overtime. The twenty-five thousand will cover our salaries and our operating budget until we can get money coming back in from a third-party vendor that is doing their billing, give us a little financial stabilization. And also, down the road, I can't give you a timeline, I wished I could, but maybe we can work with the board and decrease that twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't think that money, that the support from the board will ever go away, because there's no money to be made in a non-alien service. The volunteers are a thing of the past. If the national shortage, I could write hundreds of articles to you from around the country, but you can look right here locally at our local fire departments and our rescue squads. We're very fortunate in this county that you have one rescue squad that is all volunteer that don't bill, but they're still suffering and they're part of this reason for the RFP. There's only one rescue squad in the area, that's in Washington County, that's Mount Rogers, that are still volunteer, but they're struggling themselves. But our fire departments in this county is struggling, the EMS is, is, and it's nationwide, it's not just here. So, as I ask you for this money, I'm asking you not only as the captain of Salt Rescue Squad, uh, the citizen of the community. I do not live in Saltwell, but I'm there very often, that you would look into funding us at least while the RFPs are being looked at and until it can be decided upon, if not further. I hope you would look into it as funding us further, but I understand this is a business. You've got to do what's best for business. But along the meantime, we've got to serve our citizens of Smith County, and we've got to do what's best for them. It would be nice of me as a captain if I went out and bought my employees a new ambulance and new monitors, but that's not best for business. That's not best for the citizens, because they can't afford to pay for it. I know the poverty level in Saltwell alone is right at thirty-five percent, that's the standards. I know that, you know, you can't get blood out of the toilet. We are billing everything we can. As you see on the first page, the second thing is, we have outsourced our billing to a third-party, a company that specializes in it, we're hoping for more return from that versus us doing in-house billing. Um, we increased both our billing rates for our ALS and BLS transports to come more inclined with other departments in this county to hope to get a higher percentage back. We've also started something that was very hard for our board to come to agreeance with is refusals. We average roughly twenty refusals a month. So, we're going to try to start billing for that, hoping to get some money recouped in from that, whether it will be a soft bill, so somebody can afford to pay it. We'll take what they can give us. If they can't, then we'll proceed on to the next call. Also, uh, we have looked at, or I have looked at, saving on our utilities, putting our power bill on a budget, cutting our cable internet packages, uh, planning on working with the town of Saltwell in the near future, getting our water bill put on the budget. I've done all this over the past months, because I do understand that I have to work with you for you to work with me. So, these are changes that I have made, that the board have agreed to at Salt Rescue Squad in hopes that you see that we are serious about working with you to get your funding to continue to provide the care to the citizens of our service area.
Well, I, and, and you're welcome to continue on. I, I, I know the board has a lot of questions. Just for, for my peace of mind to say it out loud, I know the comment was you made there, if we take it away, that's not what the county's intentions were and I, I, I know I sat in on some of the first EMS meetings that we had over this situation and, and we had a lot longer timeline that we were looking at then. We were into a four to a six-month timeframe and so when I get an email saying, hey, we're, we're done in about a week, you know, it kind of caught me off-guard as well as I'm sure it has everybody else. And, and, um, our, our approach to that even at the time was, what can we do proactive to make this, to continue this service, to make this happen? And that's where the, the RFP came in discussion with multiple people in the room that are involved in firing EMS. That's not my forte, I don't pretend to know about how that operates. But I, I was sitting in as a county member and, and that was a proactive approach I felt like that we were trying to take to, to continue. And how it gets turned around to we're trying to shut it down, it, it just really floors me how social media works these days. But we are trying to make sure that the citizens of all the counties have what they need. This isn't like an air purifier that we need in a building somewhere. This is life and death and we understand the severity of the situation. Um, I know there's a lot of opinions here tonight that need to be heard and so what's our best approach to move forward to make this happen? So, uh, I'll open the floor up. If you're finishing your presentation, I'll open the floor up to what anybody has. I know everybody's probably got an opinion or something to say and, um, so I'll open it up if anybody wants to address this.
I've got some simple questions started off with this one. Uh, your page here is a little confusing to me, is this from, uh, October to December?
That's the last quarter of the year. I done a three-month study that we had that had been approved by our accountant, uh, I'll, I can't think, I can't pronounce it, but you know, and associates, they have approved that, so I wanted to make sure I brought you the...
So, these, these deals that you're paying are for three months, right?
Yes, sir.
So, you've got a, and it's very hard for me to see, you've got a three-month TV bill, eleven hundred dollars?
Bear with me while I go get, get to that page, sir. The TV bill includes our internet TV package and phone package. It's in Comcast, it's one business package to them. That eleven hundred dollars is for three months.
That's one month.
Yes, sir.
For three months.
Yes, sir.
And what are the other three months? It's eleven hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
What is your utilities other?
The utilities other is Highland's propane. Our base is hit by propane gas and that is how, uh, Mr. Alba and them listed it in there. They didn't specify, it's through Highland's propane for the gas for the base.
So, bear with me here, back to the TVs, that includes internet and whatnot?
That's the internet, phone, and TV.
Internet, phone, and TV.
Yes, sir.
I have all three, but I'm glad my name...
Well, they put us on a business package. They would not let us be residential. Comcast put us on a business package, so I didn't have no options on that, sir.
Your, uh, total income for three months was seventy-three, five, thirty-five?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That was with allotment from the county that y'all gave us of thirty-two thousand and, or roughly thirty-two, thirty-three thousand and the four-for-life that we get from the state of Virginia to go towards supplies and training.
Who keeps the books? You or somebody else?
Uh, Brenda Evans keeps the books and, uh, I've been an associate reviewing them monthly.
So, do you know what your billing was for three months?
Three months? No, sir, I do not have that present, uh, with me, I do not.
Uh, we're, Mr. ...
He's on the roll here.
No, I'm about done. Other than just a, a comment to add upon some of the things you did since I'm talking, I'm just getting on the phone. Uh, you know, to elaborate on what Todd said, we're not here to close another damn, we're here to fix a problem. You know, the problem I have is a call I get today, you had three months, three or four months to survive and something needed to be done, which I totally understand. I get the, I get the rescue squad situation, it's terrible. But the problem I have, and there's a red flag up to me, is we got three months and now we got a week.
At the, okay, I understand.
Uh, so, you know, that's the first thing I tell myself when that comes up, who's watching, who's, who's watching this? Who's, who's taking care of this? You know? As slow as I am, I can't be off three months from then to a week. So, that, those concerns up to me. Now, I'm off over helping the rescue squads, I get this Mary Evans, but I want to make sure that we do it the right way.
Can I respond to your?
Sure, you can.
I was at the EMS committee on that Friday and when it was said, four months, I made a statement at that committee, it's more like two to four, if that long. So, I understand that the, it was said, four months, but I made a statement at that time, it's two to four, if that long. Now, whoever represented to you the three months, I cannot speak for that person. I can speak for what I said at the EMS committee on that Friday evening at four o'clock when I stated, it's two to four, if that long. So, now, who prescribed the information to you that's three months? I cannot testify to that, I do not know who that was. I can tell you what I gave the committee. Say what?
Three would be a good average of two.
Well, I said, "if that long." That, that's what I'm saying.
Explain to that, to Joe about the Medicare, the way they were expecting the big payout, payback from Medicare.
Yes.
Didn't materialize.
And also, to answer your question, Mr. Kyle sits on our board at Saltwell, so he knows our financials. Well, I, I'm just saying, he knows our financial status as well as I do. So, the episode of Medicare was, there was a change of guard, I want to say, of employment during the summer of last year. During that time, uh, Medicare usually asks for a renewal of every five years of your, you submit to them for another five years. In that time, the office staff changed, that was prior to my employment as the captain and operations manager of Saltwell. Uh, I do not have exact details of how this transpired besides what I've been told. That got overlooked when the office manager that is in there now came back. She was still under, she did not know that Medicare had requested a review, but Medicare was not followed up on. And then we found out in December that the Medicare, our Medicare number had been expired, so we was not able to bill October, November, December...
Of last year.
Of last year. And right now, we have not been able to deal, bill January and February this month, because it's going through the federal government review process, uh, to get our Medicare number back. The third-party billing that we have turned it over to, they're telling us that by first of April, we should be able to bill Medicare. I don't control that, it's the federal government. They have sent stuff back that I know of, asking for our trucks and everything, VIN numbers and everything on that, but I do not have a, that's what we're going to...
Who is your third-party billing?
It's called Prestige Billing. They provide our EMS software for our charting.
When did you tell me you took over?
September the sixteenth, sir.
Thank you, I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
During that time when, when Mr. Arnold was talking about Medicare, there was two phone calls made to Medicare. One said, "You need to renew the number." Then the next phone calls, the lady said, "No, you don't, it's good." So, they didn't until the third time when they found out about it. That's what they've all, all killed. Medicare said yes one time and no the next time. So, it was actually not only maybe our fault, but probably Medicare too, because they didn't know whether it needed to be renewed or not. So, it was too late.
Yes, sir.
You had stated that you found out in December that you had the information?
Yes, sir.
So, when was our EMS meeting that Friday? I can't, I can't remember dates.
It was the Friday before the February board meeting.
So, in that meeting, when we were discussing finances and, and the possible length of time, uh, you knew at that time that you weren't going to get...
We, we did not have a timeline on this Medicare at that time, because we, we, we can't call Medicare and say, "What's the projected date?"
Do they pay like monthly, quarterly?
They usually pay out within forty-five to sixty days of them being billed. But we knew, we found out in December, we finally got every confirmation done, like Mr. Kyle said, with all the phone calls. So, we started, we had reapplied first of the year, so we're, we've been in limbo since then, because like I said, we can't call Medicare and say when this is going to be done. We go through Prestige, they're our middleman, they're working on it, and that's what they're telling us, because...
So, there in December, I mean, did you miss payments in December that you were kind of expecting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Will you be able to backbill those when you get your, you have to start the day they approve you?
Yes, sir. Medicare, they will not allow you to backbill. If you don't have an active number with them, you cannot bill them.
So, the day they approve your number, whatever date they do that's the date you can start?
Yes, sir.
So, when that estimation, when that estimation was made, two to four months or something like that, they was expecting to get something, but it didn't materialize. And that's why we're here today. It didn't come. Right, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we was hoping for a quick turnaround on this Medicare number since we called it and we even confronted them about the call, phone calls. So, we was hoping they'd turn it around quickly. And even with a third-party billing trying to get it for us, we're still waiting to this day. So, I mean, we're still pushing for it.
Did you get a Medicare payment in November?
No, we did not get nothing from October, November. We, we have not received a Medicare payment from the end of September to today, because our number went dead as of October the first.
And, and you started in September?
Yes, sir. September sixteenth.
Around the end of December, the first of January, y'all applied to be reinstated?
Yes, sir.
How much was your, if you, an average monthly, like, oh, how much paid do you, do you get from?
We would estimate enough, Medicare had paid us for those three months, it would have been right at forty-two thousand dollars.
And, I mean, that, by in this room knows the history of the, of previous, previous squad employment and, and Medicare issues that were there, was that not on the forefront of your thought when you came in in September? I need to make sure everything's on the up and up?
I was told at that time, when I came in and took over, I was told that our financial and our billing was good to go, that I didn't have any worries or concerns on that part, and that's why I never addressed it.
And I've got trouble understanding you, a couple of things. You, you tell us that you need twenty-five thousand dollars a month, well, if I take your deficit for a quarter, it's only eighteen thousand dollars a month, so why seven more thousand?
Because when I do our payroll, our payroll will be approximately twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars, that's the new standards we've gone to. six hundred dollars with the new standards we've gone to. The other twenty-four hundred dollars will go towards our operating expenses of lights, power, and if we have a truck that pairs up or something, that we will be able to take care of.
And I want to reiterate what a couple of guys have already said, the sentiment that we're here to kill something. We're here for the welfare of the citizens, every citizen in this county, the welfare and safety of those citizens. The last thing we're here to do is kill something. And I've heard it several different times, that we're taking rescue squad out of the county and we're killing it and privatizing it and, hey, we didn't pull the plug out this boat, okay? And we're not going to put the plug back in a boat that's taken on water. That's my stance. Now, that may not be everybody else's stance, but, you know, we're here to take care of the citizens of this county, make sure that they are provided the EMS services that they need to be, but it really comes across and gets me wrong when it's like that we're trying to kill something. That's the last thing we're here to do. We're here to fix it, and you got to remember, we didn't pull the plug.
I understand that. And I think the reason that it's coming across that way, because if you watch the board meeting that it was discussed in, there was never any discussion about this is Plan A and Plan B with the defender squads or help them out. In that meeting of last month, when you look at it online, there was never discussion about helping the squads. It was all about...
You told me you had three...
Okay. I'm not just talking about me. I'm talking about as a citizen out here looking at that video. That's what you're saying, is you're discussing helping all the citizens. And I'm saying to anybody that looks at that video online and watches the meeting for the last forty-five minutes or so that y'all discussed it, it was only discussed about the RFP, getting it and taking care of it. There was no discussion at any time of, hey, yeah, let's use this as Plan A, but Plan B, we need to talk about how we can help the squads.
I don't remember watching the video online, but I was at that meeting and I do remember myself personally asking, what would it take to continue at hand? So, that question was asked at that meeting. And I know our role here is, I don't feel like by any means is to, and I hate to use the term micromanage, because I've heard it used before, but to fill out your paperwork and know what you need and what you don't need. But we need to find service for the Saltville area to have service. I see people in the audience tonight that I would like to... I don't know if tonight's the night we need to hear from them or we need to have another emergency management meeting. We can't let this delay. So, we need to know what our options are today. And I understand, going back to your statement, nobody asks, but all right, if I ask you again tonight, what would it take? And you're going to say it's going to take twenty-five thousand dollars. There's one plan. Our RFP that we're trying to get together and present is another plan. All right? That plan is not going to coincide with the timeframe that you're not going to be in operation. I'm all open for anybody, more discussion on this issue, but I don't feel like we need to maybe necessarily micromanage what you spent here or here, you shouldn't be here or here. We need to know what our options are as of us sitting here tonight, because this is getting ready to happen and we need to have this covered. I appreciate the work that's been done in firing EMS wholeheartedly. That's not a field that I'm in, but I respect that, because it's life-saving to the citizens of the county, including myself and my family. So, I would like to hear, if you could help me in directing how to get that across, but I would like to hear what our other options are. And if, guys, I'm not putting you all on the spot, but who can step up at the time? We need to step up till, until we can get this sorted out. This isn't something I think we can fix even tonight for a long-term plan by any means. And I think our emergency council meeting needs to come back into play to kind of get more of a game plan on what's going on, so...
Well...
Yes, sir. I would.
We've heard options.
Yes, sir.
I believe Charlie Harrington is somewhere behind the podium.
Back there.
He is the county's emergency services coordinator. And I spoke to him extensively today and asked him to be here tonight to provide the board, because he is your employee.
That's right.
I would like if the board would entertain, allow him to come to the podium and share some of his thoughts and ideas.
And I don't want this to come across that we're attacking you, Mr. Arnold. I get you came into a bad situation. I totally understand that. And I've not sat on your board. I've not been in your... I don't know how you guys operate. I just don't get that deep. I've got a lot of other things I do, but we just need to get to the nuts and bolts of it. And I don't want you to come across like, feel like we're attacking you, because I don't, but the situation is very intense for the county. It's a very, very big commitment for Smith County. So, Charlie, if you would come up, I'd appreciate some insight.
Ah, if regrets just a little bit. It came to our attention several months ago. I wouldn't say several, because Kelly, you've got a letter in there that I wrote, probably somewhere that you can find, because I'm like Utah, I can't keep up with dates. But the concern was very much that Salt was missing a lot of calls. Chilhawee was having to answer those calls as well as private service. And one of the things that the board has a responsibility for, a couple of things, is the fact that for an agency to operate, it has to have the board's blessings. They have to be designated as a dear agency, being one of their agencies, which these agencies are. And they also have a response plan, which is signed off on by everybody that basically says, by state regulation, you tell us how long it takes you to answer a call, from the time of the tone till the time the wheels are rolling, how long does it take? From the time the wheels are rolling until you're on a scene, how long does it take? And that has to be looked at and actually supposed to be monitored by each squad. I think that's gotten a little bit lax, but those are some of the things that we're concerned about. So, I was asked by the committee to go to Saltville and take a look at what was going on. And I wrote a letter making a request to come over and see that. Mr. Carter saw the letter and approved of it. We didn't make any demands. We didn't do any Freedom of Information Act requests or anything else, and we didn't ask to look at anything that wasn't public knowledge. And so, I rolled over there to take a look at the management. And the bottom line was, they didn't have sufficient personnel and money was going downhill fast. I reported that back to Mr. Carter. I was asked by the town manager over there, same thing. He asked me to come to town council. And we came to council and they just said, "What situation?" I said, "We are." And they said, "What do you think?" And I said, "Might make six months. If some money comes in, maybe with some changes, they might make nine." But basically, it looks to me like that's about as far as it's going to be able to get. Okay? So, I made a suggestion, council, they possibly see about merging with fire department. And they felt like that might be a good idea. And at that point in time, they said the fire department had some EMTs and Saltville Rescue, some of the members are in there and they appear to be in agreement with that. I suggested they get in touch with council, because there are several things that happen when you make a merger of that nature. And I said, "You don't have a whole lot of time, because what's going on?" And I left, didn't hear anything else for quite a while, until Roscoe called me one night and he said, "Can you come over here?" And so, I came over and three ladies are on the board of directors there. And one of them is the billing person, the other was the president of the board. And they said, "We got a thing that lasts three months. We got to shut it down. That's it." So, in echoing what you just said, Todd, nobody in here said, "We want to shut anybody down." They came and said, "We're shutting down." Period. Okay? Then they went to the town council and said, "We're shutting down." At which point, town council said, "We really can't afford to support them and Smith County, it's your problem." So, there we are. Now, Joe's just saying that they've got a couple of weeks. I'm like, wow! Because we still were looking, they said they had enough to operate for three months. Remember Roscoe when we were in there? They said they had enough to operate for three months. Maybe if the town could give them a little bit, they might be able to go forward. Which is the point in time when we came back and said, "What are we going to do?" Because in all honesty, gentlemen, ma'am, there is no easy Plan A, B, or C. I'm sorry, but there isn't. And we all know that. And as I said, yes, the rescue squads are falling apart everywhere, big cities, small communities. It's going to pop, because volunteers want to be paid. And I would argue with anybody, and I'm sorry if anybody wants to take me on for this, but when every single member of that operation is being paid or no longer volunteer, because my definition of volunteer, dictionary definition of volunteer and being paid for services are two different things. And I'm not complaining about being paid for services. I certainly understand it. It's a necessary evil, but it also falls under the purview. Quite honestly, I don't like putting a private service in the community, because the rescue squads are so important and they are so viable and they are so loved by their community that as some of us said, it's almost like slap in the face to do that. But by the same token, we have an organization here that said, "We're shutting down." So, for what I said was, at least in an interim, we might have to put a private service over there. Then, it was looked into possibility, taking an RFP, looking at replacing all EMS. We're talking about Marion, Chilhawee, and they're amenable to talking about that, and putting it all together. Because our shotgun approach to this RFP, which is a fact-finding deal, would be, is there more economy of scale if you have it all? And so, that RFP is going to say, what would it take to take all of it? What would it take to take just Saltville and Sugar Grove? What would it take to just take Saltville? Just kind of spread it out, tell us what it would take, so that we'd have some idea of what we're looking at in private service. And what Mr. Arnold said is absolutely true. It's going to be expensive. I'm sure it's going to go up, because they're looking at their expenses every cotton picking year. So, to say where do we stand? I'm a little bit confused tonight, because the last conversation that I had and heard was the board of directors. They were saying, "We have to shut down." And now, they're back saying, "Well, we don't want to shut down." So, we don't want them to shut down. Well, I wish they win water or something tomorrow and we wouldn't have to talk about this for a few more years. But in reality, EMS on volunteer side is disappearing. And as we have discussed in our committee meetings, and I think you will read, planning has to be done, because, you know, the chances of it lasting another five years, I think, are maybe pushing it. I don't know. I was really optimistic years ago and saying, "Oh, man, it'll go on for quite a while, especially in the small areas." It's not happening. I don't have a golden answer for you tonight. I wish that I did.
What about a short-term solution till we can get on this other end and decide whichever we're going as far as... And I'm sorry.
No, sir.
It's covering Saltville area till we get this thing figured out.
I think that you have two options. If Saltville's not going to have the funding to function, I think you have two short-term options. Okay? Number one, short-term option would be to allow Chilhawee, if they so desire, to answer the calls, switch around so that Chilhawee could bill for those calls, so that they could at least have some revenue, and a county possibly give them a small amount of supplement over and above that revenue in the interim. That would be one way to get it covered. What Joe pointed out about, oh, all of a sudden, everybody was busy and there weren't enough... Hey, I've got news for you. On any given day in any given area, that happens, because we could only have so many resources. And while that was certainly a logical comment, that happens. But there were resources that could have been pulled in from Washington County, could have been pulled in from Marion if they were needed. I mean, that's covered. And there are times that Marion's had to go somewhere else and call Chilhawee and say, "Can you cover while we're on the backside of Atkins?" I mean, that's just the way it works. And the same with Saltville. They've all done that. These agencies have all worked very well together, trying to take care of the citizens to the best they can. That's one option. Option number two, in the short term, is to contact with a private ambulance service to go over there, allow them to bill. They would hard bill and the county would possibly have to supplement them a little bit for a couple or three months while we're trying to sort this thing out, but that would be option two. Option three, of course, would be if the RFP comes in and it's something that's totally reasonable. And then, option four, and I'm giving you A, B, C, and D here, okay? I'm giving you two quickies and then I'm giving you A, B, C, and D. Option four would be to consider, if not now, for the long run, creating a county office of emergency medical services, the county doing all of the billing and looking at what the supplement would be, and that might be the most cost-effective, efficacious thing to do for the long run. But gentlemen, as it stands right now, those are the only options that I've got to throw out here. You asked what I thought as options, those are what I can throw out.
In your capacity, what do you know? Several of those options, all, well, other than just giving the twenty-five thousand dollars a month, all those options lead to D-Day. You know, they're going to be dead. They're down. They're out. I think the vital piece of this that nobody, that we need to figure out is assets, because it becomes a lot easier for Chilhawee to respond if there's a ALS unit sitting there, ready to roll.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Now, that response time, it's a priority. There's a unit there. It's gone. How do we get to that point if we don't go forward with funding the deficiency that's there?
All right. If you don't go forward with the funding, there could be a possibility that the Saltville equipment be turned over to Chilhawee, because the way that your 501(c)(3) are chartered, especially in this particular type of an organization, those assets have to go to a like organization, which means government, another rescue squad, another volunteer organization or something along that line. What was unique with Marion when the departments merged and the same with Chilhawee was that the... Everyone went to the circuit court and the circuit court had to override the corporate charter and say, "You can dispose of the assets, but you also have to take the liabilities. So, if you're taking over, you're taking it all." And they trumped the corporate charter, basically. In this particular case, if Salt wanted to give their equipment to Chilhawee, Chilhawee helped to operate in the temporary time. That's a possibility. You're exactly right, Curtis. I mean, let's face facts, you know, I'm still a paramedic and I ran for forty-seven years. And yes, Joe, once again, was right. Sometimes those minutes really make a great big difference. And unfortunately, when you're in a rural area, sometimes if you're sitting on a truck, you can't get there quick enough. I mean, that's just, those are just the facts of life. Unfortunately, they are. But that would be one of the quick solutions if the town of Saltville and Saltville Rescue wanted to do that. The other solution that I said is bringing in a private service, the county giving them the authority to bill and letting them do that. And I'm sure they would want some kind of a stipend on top of the billing for the short period of time until we can sort through the RFPs and the other things that are going on. So, those are the only two short-term solutions I have.
One more. You mentioned the county entity. Would the county have to have a formed entity to be a recipient of the assets? Or could the county itself, without an entity, be a recipient?
Because it's a governmental agency and it's considered nonprofit. Jeff, you can probably answer this better than I can, but I think, yes, the equipment could be given to the county, because I believe that would be within the confines of the 501(c)(3). Actually, I can say, yes.
I appreciate it. And a lot of the ideas you give us is going up in the long term after we break everything. I appreciate it. I appreciate your thought. The main concern for me tonight is what we're going to do until we get to point B. So, my question is, maybe somebody else, but I, maybe you, if we choose not to fund on, can Chilhawee cover us till we can get straightened out?
Mr. Carter?
Come on, John.
I'm not going to speak for John.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I actually talked to John today and I told him, I said, "We'll do your best not to put you on the spot." So, he's probably not thinking much of me right now.
Well, we'll put Brandon on the spot.
My main concern is doing the right thing here and making sure everybody's took care of... I don't want to throw money down the tubes. Obviously, I probably want to see if there's a way that we can... Obviously, I probably want to see if there's a way that we can approach is to we get to point B, whether it's county, whatever, whatever. But I'm hoping Chilhawley, can they step up?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, we didn't come here to speak and Mike and I have a great relationship and Curtis, he calls, Big Grace, who said this is going to be on agenda. We just came to listen. There's so many issues here. I don't even know where to begin. Number one, we want to be a good neighbor for many, many reasons. Just obviously that we want to be a good neighbor. But we have one of the finest fire EMS outfits in southwest Virginia and in Virginia, fire departments at class two ISO. So we want to be a good neighbor. But as we said to the Saltville Town Council, number one, I can't commit to anything tonight. I'm just, we're just, we're talking among, this is extremely serious and call a 600-pound gorilla, that's probably not good, for lack of a better metaphor, but we-
Why you looking at me like that?
Well, I was looking at two, three people together, so add it up. But we want to help, but our help would have to be short-term, in my opinion, without talking to my counsel, and would also have to involve Marion, some dividing line, because as I've been pointing out many times, the Marion squad could get to 16 and above the high school quicker than Chilhawley could. I don't know what else to say. I think our folks have been saying, I may turn over to Brandon here, I'm not an EMS person either, more of a bean counter, but they feel maybe that if it was integrated with the fire department in Saltville, like we've done, the model we've done, that it would be more beneficial. But that's Saltville's decision, not ours. Now, I want to say, I might have muddied the water a little bit in Saltville when I said our deficit for firing EMS was $200,000. We bring in about $400,000, we spend $600,000. Most of that deficit is in fire. I provided Michael some numbers where amateurizing the ambulance made the deficit was closer to $60,000 a year and not 200. So I might have muddied some water. And Roscoe was there when I made that presentation, but I can't commit to anything. You want to add anything? We want to help, but if we're a solution, it's short-term, and by short-term, I'm not talking years. And it would have to be revenue neutral. And I'm not the dollar and cents guy of somebody's life, but we just, we're just us.
I fully understand. I get that too, John. And I don't, not meaning to put you on the spot, Mike, but-
No, no.
This is unfolding in front of us.
It is.
And, you know, I don't have an ambulance and a staff at my barn that I can bring out and help, so I can't help in that situation. So who can until we can get there? You know, and once we can, I think this is very actively, we're, I feel like that we're very actively pursuing something with the RFPs and with the meetings that we've had, knowing that, I mean, we talked to you guys, we talked to the town of Marion, we understand that the animal as a whole is changing. It, you know, volunteerism, we've talked about that and everything. So we know that is something that we've got to look at. Now, that is something that is enormous for us sitting up here representing Smith County because that is, you know, we have jail cost increase or we have this increase. This is monumental. This is life and death, and this is monumental numbers. This is something that would have to be funded, you know? I mean, we'd all have to be eating out of paper bags, I guess, everybody to, you know, there's just got to be a way to make this happen. So it's a short-term thing that we're looking at, and I, not putting you on the spot, but we're just reaching out, I guess, is-
I think my question was, if we have to go this way for a week or two or a month, do you have the personnel to cover it? We can get somebody over there. We ain't going to leave somebody without some.
That would be my main concern, would be the personnel and what type of services we're talking about providing. I mean, there, I think, and, you know, of course, none of this comes without the blessing of the town and Mr. Clark, but I think there are options, if we're talking about a week here, of maybe putting an ALS provider in Saltville's area, you know, in some sort of a quick response vehicle to begin treatment until a transport, you know, something, it all depends on what kind of level of service we're talking about, you know? Because if we do that, we are going to have to probably pay someone to be over there. You know, and we're talking about, you know, are we talking about 24-hour or 24/7 coverage, that type of deal? I think the, or are we talking about staffing an ALS ambulance 24/7? You know, there's big cost gaps, cost gaps in between those two options that I just mentioned, but those are options for the short-term. Now, the specific numbers, honestly, I would have to give it Mr. Clark and Chief Hanes to come up with specific numbers on those, on each of those options. But they are options.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to clear something up, and I think Charlie and Harold will agree. We're not talking about a week. We're probably talking two, three months at best. So I don't want to leave the wrong feeling of a week. We're getting the RFP out this weekend. There's a couple weeks for that. There's a review. I mean, we're looking at it probably at least two months on.
I mean, if services stop in a week, yeah.
Yeah, not a term for a week. Yeah.
I have a question, I guess, going back to Charlie. One of the options I was listening for, and I didn't hear you say it and I may have missed it, is go ahead and funding the squad we have in place right now, because are they willing to continue on if they can get some funding?
Well, my understanding, yeah, they would like to continue to go on, but, and yes, if they got some money from the county and if they got some money from the town, they might be able to go another couple of months. Even Joe, when I spoke with him a while back, Saltville's running maybe 50 calls a month and you've got 10 or 15 of those that are refusals. And that does not bring in a tremendous amount of revenue. So the cost-effective portion, if that's not going to happen, is supplementing Chilhawley after the insurance, which is not going to be that hefty as if you're looking at the $3 million, one of the $3 million bids that Washington County got just from Lake. They didn't take, by the way.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Well, we got several. Go ahead. I've got something else to say, too.
You know, hunting this thing down the road, just with a plug, with a temporary plug in it, I don't think helps you all, helps Marion, helps anybody. And if the consideration is to throw money to fix it for a month, they operate the $200,000 deficit for firing EMS. Marion operates with a-
About broken even right now.
But, you know, but yet we don't supplement anything on the county side to Marion, Chilhawley, Sugar Grove. You know, we start handing out $25,000 to one entity. I'm sure Mr. Clark's board or council would like to see that $200,000 deficit cured by the county as well, because 70% of their calls are in the county. So, you know, you can't, you can't throw a plug in one without realizing that there's bleeding at all levels.
And if I may add, I appreciate your point, but our EMS is about 60 and our fire's about 140. So you said Marion's breaking even about EMS. We're in the fire 10%.
So your EMS is $60,000 a year. Is what y'all are adding to it?
Well, yeah, but that includes, we looked at the budget, it was $49,000 plus amateurizing a $240,000 ambulance that we only paid 44 over 10 years, so it came out around $55,000, $60,000.
That's what normally is from year to year?
Yes, EMS.
All right, thank you. So you never did hear back from the town about joining from the two forces? Nobody ever got that?
No, I did talk to town about that. They won't do it. Well, first, our fire department doesn't want to. Secondly, when I initially spoke to Saltville about it, they informed me that there were at least 10 firefighters that were EMTs. Turns out, they have no EMTs and they have no desire to do it. What the benefit was of Marion and Chilhawley going together was that there were EMTs and firefighters on both sides, even though they were separate departments. So you're able to have the resources and people already in place that are trained. And that Chilhawley and Marion both, that's kind of how that was worked. Saltville doesn't have that ability because they don't have that training.
So they have no ability to do what goes on?
What would, I'm sorry. Oh, you speak up, Roscoe. This is your neighborhood, brother. You need to jump in here on the plate.
And I've watched, these guys are great. Sitting back here, they've done a great job and it's not their fault. But my question is, what would it cost to staff a truck over there 24/7 versus the 25 a month? You're still, if you staff a truck over at Chilhawley, you're still putting the flood back in the boat, you're talking about.
Well, but I-
It's a temporary thing. Which is going to be most-
I think, am I correct in saying that you made the comment that you, the temporary fix that you all would suggest would be budget neutral in the temporary environment?
Well, I don't know if we suggest anything, but if we do something, it needs to be at least budget neutral. We don't want to make money on it, but we can.
Right. One advantage you'll have is when you go in there, your social security billing will be available, or they're still dependent on getting it back in place.
And how do you let that lapse when you had this lawsuit that you had several years ago with Medicare? I just don't get that as an entity.
Another thing you're going to have to think about, which Charlie knows very well and these guys back here know very well, when you start talking staffing a truck from Chilhawley and Saltville, this rescue squad you're going on that bill, the town of Saltville does.
Well, I'm sure they want some rescues over there, though.
Yeah, I'm sure of that, too. But you know how things get when you start.
Yeah, I do, but, you know, I just want to give the people a level of service and I want to do it the cheapest way we can do it.
That's what I want.
You know, I'm not here saying that nobody in the back didn't do their job. I'm not saying nobody didn't do their job. We got a problem. It's come up everywhere. Now, I'm astonished that Marion's breaking even and Chilhawley's no further than they are. I mean, that's some hope some word of. So, and if they're that close in Saltville, I mean, you know, if it's a cat, it's a cat, okay? If it's a duck, it's a duck. If you're so far out, something went wrong. So I don't want to throw money back to bad money, you know? But on the other hand, what's the cheapest way?
Personally, I think this is the cheapest way, at least initially, because if, with Chilhawley billing, there's going to be a lower gap right now. I'm going to throw another monkey wrench into work, folks. My understanding is that Washington County is pulling all their support from Mount Rogers' Fire Department because Mount Rogers is not answering. And one of the concerns is that then Mount Rogers is going to turn on its own, Saltville constantly. And, you know, we've got a couple of roads over in that area that are in Smith County territory, both of them aren't. So that's going to rear itself ahead here before long, and I just got the word on it, so I don't know what all the ramifications of that are yet because I haven't made time for this.
Well, and, sorry.
Well, I just, I know we've got to come up with a solution. Mr. Carter is, we need to come out of here tonight and say, okay, here's what we're going to do?
I think so. I mean, do we need to, I know you're saying it could, yes.
Can I answer a question that someone had up here?
Sure.
Somebody made a comment while Marion was breaking even, while Chilhawley was only a $60,000 deficit. That returns back to the cause volume. Marion runs 2,100, 2,200 calls with y'all, 2,400 calls. Y'all run 1,700?
No, we're 1,200.
1,200? We're at 700.
Give me 350 here that-
Well, that's the last quarter, but I'm just saying, that's where the revenue comes from. You're running 2,400 calls, you're getting more money back than if the department's running 1,200. 1,200 is going to get more money back than the company that's running 700.
Okay, so hang on one second. Todd, this is my district, too, so this is very important.
Yes, sir.
As it is you, Ross.
Mr. Chairman? Wait a second.
Just one second. You got here that in three months, you run 350 calls.
321.
Is that correct?
That's per Mr. Shannon Wick.
Yeah, he's got to be resolved. So if you add that out in a year, if you average that every three months, four quarters, you're talking well under calls.
Yes, sir, but billable calls, then 321 are fires, wrecks that you may go on that you may not transport off of, cancellations that you may go on, you may go help granny out of the floor, that's 321 is calls that came into dispatch. That is not billable calls. That is why, if you look back at our letter and I stated that we have put a refusal rate in there to try to help offset some of that. So that is not 321 billable calls.
And if you stay over, I don't want you refusing anybody up my way today.
No, I mean, we're not refusing. I'm just saying, if granny calls us to pick up out of the floor and she says, I'm not going to the hospital, she will get a soft bill. It's been done in this county right now.
All right, I'm sorry.
But that's your difference.
I've got a lot of questions, but I don't have any answers. On the, on the calls that you're running, so since roughly, I mean, September, when you found out there was that Medicare issue?
Yes, sir.
So the, if you're Salt, I mean, and everybody Saltbills and nobody up here has a problem with Saltville. So basically, your only revenue since September has been billing private insurance?
That is correct.
Or sending a bill to someone who maybe didn't have insurance?
Yes, sir.
And just something while y'all are chewing all the possibilities, I will point out in Sugar Grove, first, I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Harrington for coming over for that EMS meeting over in Sugar Grove, answered a lot of questions, a lot of rumors. Again, a couple of y'all have addressed that the rumor in Sugar Grove was that the county was trying to shut down and wanted to be an EMS department, which is obviously nothing further than away from the truth. But I do appreciate you coming over and answering questions. I appreciate the citizens that were there that, I mean, obviously, everybody's concerned. If I had to ditch one home, I want somebody to come and answer it. And everybody gets that. Sugar Grove is totally 100% owned here, so they're still fighting it off. But even with that, a lot of the volunteers work and they have trouble with coverages during work hours and things like that, and they just, to meet those guidelines for accepting calls, they've just signed with, I think it was Trinity, a contract and agreement to cover for certain hours. So while this is a Saltville issue right now, and I know that town of Chilhawley and town of Marion, you know, are kind of floating there at even or a little under, I mean, it's a battle. I mean, one comment that was made that was even more concerning to me than having the Saltville discussion at that EMS meeting on that Friday before the February meeting was when the comment was made within five years, I wasn't sure that anybody would be offering EMS services. That is a large concern for anybody sitting up here in the citizens of the county. So it's a mess. It's like pill and bone, and there is no easy answer to any of it. But I, I mean, there was a comment made about funding and things like that, and of course, we're talking about taxpayer money, but we want the citizens of the county to be taken care of. But I also have, I'm having trouble with, we had that meeting in February, I mean, there were other things going on prior to that, you know, timeframes have changed, but you presented a letter to us that says, as of March the 10th, these are some of the adjustments that you made. But if I knew in September I wasn't getting my bill, why was an adjustment, and there probably was-
We did not know in September we were going to get billed. We did not find out till in December. The Medicare number went dead September the 30th. We was not made aware that we was not being able to bill until approximately the second week of December. That's when we started making phone calls, trying to figure out what had happened. That's when we went through the three or four phone calls Mr. Kyle pointed out to you. And then when we found out that was not, that this whole debacle was going on with Medicare, then we started saying, okay, we're going to have to start recouping some of this money. That's when we looked at increasing our rates, increased, done the refusal charge and everything because we knew financially that was going to hurt us. As I said earlier, we did not know how long it would take Medicare to approve our number. We was hoping for four to six weeks. As it's found out, it's going on three months, and we still hadn't heard back from them. The phone call yesterday to Prestide, they said they're hoping that we'll be up and billing by April the 1st. I'm not going to sit here and tell you we will be billing April 1st because as my hopes have been dashed many times with Medicare since January, it's not come to light. it's not come to light. I can't tell you when we will start billing Medicare. Mr. Harrington, some of you board questioned, made a question earlier about Saltville. The board came to them. Yes, we did because the board knew we was running out of money, that we, the board, could not financially sustain that. So as far as the board was concerned, we couldn't financially sustain ourselves. And at that time when the board made the decision, Mr. Martin, he came to us, him and Ron Orr came to us approximately in first December and said, if you ever see that you're gonna have to shut down after the comment or after the meeting that he had with Mr. Harrington prior to my September hire date back approximately one year ago, he said, if you ever see, you let us know then so we can start working to a plan. But when we seen that we cannot financially sustain ourselves due to losing the Medicare funding, that's when we made the announcement that we knew, the board knew, and I say the board because the board was the one that made the decision, that the board knew that we could not financially continue to sustain ourselves. So we made the announcement first to let everybody know that financially Saltville Rescue Squad was in trouble. Then we started coming to the town to ask for help. We presented ourselves tonight because this, this happened on the 1st of February. We wanted y'all to be made aware that this was going to happen. We wanted to make it known. We didn't wanna walk in here and say, oh, we're gonna shut down tomorrow, but we need money. We wanted it to be known that we could not financially sustain ourselves. That's why the announcement was made first, then we have followed up making more changes and now we are here asking you for help. The staff that I have is all about the changes that we have made. They're supporting it. They want to continue making Saltville Rescue Squad.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but we, you know, there's a million different opinions, a million different viewpoints on this. We could go all night with this. One option I didn't hear you mention was to hand over the 25,000. I mean, maybe because that's already on the table. You've been there, you've assessed the situation. You're firing EMS director for, for the county. If we give the money, is it, is it, is it a solvent entity? Is it, is it providing the services needed? Is it, is it up to the standard that, that you would expect even if we hand over that money?
But he's not putting you on the spot.
Cause that's what it all boils down to.
I, I understand what you're saying. Um, let me just say, may I just digress just a little bit, two things here. When I went to Saltville and looked at what they had, they were showing me eight people on the road. That was eight people, 24 hours a day. After I left, they rallied a bit, brought in some more people and started picking up some calls and some revenue, which is why I guess it kind of extended things out because they, you know, they dug out top board much to their credit. And I, I seriously mean, they did some serious stuff there for a while. My concern, well, honestly, is this. I don't think that... Yeah, the reason volunteer rescue squads worked for so long and so well is because they're volunteer rescue squads. Kinda like telling you, man, I got into it when I was 16 years old. After 47 years, when they said, you have to pay, get paid, I said, I'm done. Because I got into it as a volunteer and I left as a volunteer. I wouldn't take it down. I know that that's, that's a rare thing now because Sugar Grove, this has been said, is the only one that does it. My concern is very simple. I don't think that they can rapidly enough, rapidly enough, what, purpose you've got, purpose of here, with $25,000 infusion now, continually getting 25,000 dollars. With the call volume that's been lost over there, with the age of equipment, with the lack of personnel, I don't think you got a role out there. I didn't even ask you that.
We got 15 on roll and since September the 16th, we have been staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including the holidays, with adequate, with staffing, as you see by Mr. Williams' numbers, we've only missed 10 calls out of the last five months and those were second calls. So the numbers there that I presented to you should answer about the staffing and so forth. Like I said, we, we've never, and since September 16th, we have always been staffed 24/7.
Outstanding. You know, really, that, that was, that was major to begin with. It's, I think the future over there, in all honesty, can fall down to number of calls and all revenue. And to be able to sustain the organization with low volume calls that they now have. Seriously don't see it as being sustainable. You know, and I don't, I don't wanna see this hamper. You know, Saltville goes back to 1958 and, and I can remember the level of premier outfits in the country. You know, at one time their call volume was so high because they were operating and doing services. ALS and everything else. And so they had a tremendous business going until things happened. But the, the call volume like we're talking about, uh, it's pretty low.
And, and, and correct me if I, I may be off on this, but, so there's low call volume, but yet it would result in increased call volume from Marion, Chill Hallie, maybe some bland entities. So therefore, no matter what, Marion, Chill Hallie, those entities, they already have their fixed cost. So in actuality, it, it could curve that barely breaking even or 58,000, 54,000 in EMS shortfall. It, it actually could end up on somewhat of a small regional push being beneficial in a backdoor way.
I think so. That's what I was trying to say too. Because here again, you know, Chill Hallie will run, they're still soft billing. If we have to call one of our other services and say, go ahead and take it, then they're hard billing. They're out of citizens. Charges should remain much higher and, and they're still gonna want some money to operate. So, you know, I, I guess the whole thing boils down to economy scale, which is what I was saying about this big RFP, what's the economy just like?
And we don't know that. And we're sitting here with, saying that we might be done Saturday and we've gotta-
Going back to your comment just now about helping Chill Hallie and them with their financial, you're gonna put a burden on them because that's gonna put more wear and tear on their trucks that they're not having today because nothing against Brandon and Chief Hanes, their call volume's close to interstate, they've got it. You start spreading their trucks out, that's gonna put more wear and tear on their vehicles. And I understand what you're saying.
I see them going across 107 a lot already. I live in Chill Hallie and I travel to Saltville a lot and I see them heading that way already.
And I guarantee you that that was prior to September. I think Mr. Moore here would testify that they're not coming over nowhere near what they was prior to September versus what they are now. If they're coming over now, it's one or two reasons. For a second call and/or to provide advanced life support that we may not have at that time. I mean, you said they're coming over all the time. We're only rolling 10 calls. We only rolled 10 calls in five months, so technically by the numbers, that would be only twice the, twice the month on average if they're coming to cover a call for us.
Can I take on one second, if you don't mind? Mr. Chairman, I think we all, I know I've got enough information to just, the question here tonight, one simple question, keep this going. We all know we gotta change, is okay? So we gotta make a move tonight to get somebody some money to keep some service going.
Cause we gotta do that tonight. Is that correct? I mean, do we?
If it's gonna cease to exist this weekend, well, I'm here.
We're not gonna meet again before next weekend, so we gotta do it tonight.
I'd love to swallow after this. I'd love just to, and then think a minute. You know what I mean? But it's not gonna, we don't have that luxury. I get that. Phil, go ahead, Phil.
So if I may be allowed to finish, I have enough information that I know what I wanna do if everybody else does. And so we're gonna be there. I appreciate everybody. I'm here to hang nobody. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what's right. But I think, I feel good about what I wanna do now, so if you wanna entertain a motion or if somebody else needs to hear something else.
You got the thoughts, let's run, let's hear it. We can always vote it down.
You know, my, my motion, my motion is that we thought, uh, we're gonna put out 20. I've seen something go across the table here that's almost, is it privy to say something?
It's unofficial and it's only-
All right, unofficial, turn it over. My motion is that we take what we need, call on our neighbors over there that, uh, you know, help us out. We gotta do so. John, you can mind adding with us too. So, uh, you know, I'm willing to make a motion if we need to give Chill Hallie $20,000 to do whatever we need and take the necessary steps. If we need to put somebody there, that's the way what my motion goes under. I'm not into, I don't wanna fund Saltville anymore as, or as the operation is, is, it's kind of been a nightmare for years. I've seen nobody over there ain't doing a good job now, but for whatever reason, it ain't working. It ain't working.
I'll second that.
And if you wanna laugh, you can step inside.
No, sir, I, I'm not laughing at you.
All right. Well, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second on the table to, uh, I guess to-
For the, wait, let's clarify, $20,000 for the remainder of the year?
Phil, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I would think that would depend on giving Chill Hallie the opportunity to take a look. I mean, I think everybody agrees that if we go that route, that it would need to be revenue neutral cause, you know, we don't wanna take your money out of-
If you did, just have a little heads up, John.
Phil, wait, we're not here to, to, to do this. We're not here to supplement Saltville Rescue Squad. We don't wanna do it. I can't, I can't, you all passed this motion. I can't say if we're gonna do it or not because we don't know the numbers. I have no idea what we're gonna do. I mean, we're, I appreciate Mr. Curtis' comments that we're gonna get more revenue per call, correct. But who's gonna pay for two, as Brandon was saying, if, uh, just elementary care, two ALS vehicles? Who's gonna pay for the ambulance? Who's gonna pay for three people that we would need to go to the hospital?
I, I, I can't, I can't. Hold, hold on.
I can't, I can't say.
But maybe we just need a resolution asking, formally asking your, your, your council-
We got a council meeting tonight, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at some hard numbers and I, I, I can't commit to it tonight. And again, we're not here to-
No, I understand that.
-to plan anybody.
No, no, and we don't want you to, but you, you are willing to be the good neighbor. And I think what we're trying to say is we're, we're willing to, and, and you willing to do that, we're willing to at least give you the pledge. We're behind you in doing that to give, to kind of lighten the burden of you feeling uneasy about it.
That's fine. That's not my call.
And I agree, that's not your call. That's, that's your council's call. That's, um, but it also comes down to the well-being of, of, of the citizens. It's, but it's not.
May I ask Mr. Harrington a question?
Yeah.
Can you explain how the DERA works here in Smith County so that everyone's familiar with it?
Basically, statewide, if you're designated emergency response agency, you have a responsibility to cover the entire area of everyone within the DERA area now. As John Parker and I both discussed earlier, that doesn't necessarily put you in the position of being the first due agency, but you do have a responsibility to respond anywhere you need. That's what that was.
I told you guys at our last meeting we had, I said, this was coming up. It'd be a very, very big decision for this board of supervisors. A big one that we're gonna have to have. So, uh, we, we got a motion on the table in a second. Now, I don't know if that needs amended, if that's good to go. If it is, we need to discuss it, vote on it. Well, I mean, we got to, either the motion needs to be rescinded or-
May I ask when?
Fail or something, but we gotta-
Come on, man.
Okay.
Being going for $25,000 a month.
That's a damn disgrace.
Based on what Curtis said, gives off another money, get money to run one more month. While the figures are getting taken care of, we're understanding that at the end of that month, something else is gonna happen. At least you'll have that agency for a month.
Well, we're putting it down the road another month and we're sitting here till 7:30 another month from now.
Put a motion out there, we can vote on it.
Well, there's one out there. There's a motion on and a second on the table. I-
I, I'd amend the mo, let, let's, would you be willing to amend your motion to, to table, table, table the Saltville request? And if we have to have a call meeting, whatever we have to do, I, I don't know how, I don't know how you put that motion out there. But I, I'm in no favor kicking this can another month down the road. We've known this is coming. We've, we've known it's coming longer than we've been given the privy to know it was coming. We've all been sitting here, I knew this was coming when I was running for, for office. We knew the status of that. I, it kind of ticks me off that they're only coming to us when they come to us. We've known this was here. We've known it was there. We should have been asked before.
What would you prefer, move the money between?
And I'm, I'm in no interest of continuing to kick this can down the road. This, this entity is not a fixed long-term. It don't need to be a, a fixed short-term. We need to go on and have this discussion. If it's gonna happen, if they're gonna close, they're gonna close. We can't, we're not the body that's gonna decide that. So I say we amend it to table their request and, and, and set aside $20,000 for, to fill the gap for whatever entities are having to respond on the calls if, if they do shut their doors. But I, I'm in, I'm in no interest of funding a request for somebody that has known this day was coming and we're only getting a short-term notice of.
I just have trouble with putting a monetary amount on it because you don't have any idea.
Well, but it shows our seriousness in realizing the problem. We're not, we're not ignoring the citizens and we're not saying the citizens are gonna be out there.
Yeah. How about up to 20? I'll, I'll amend it up to 20. Y'all got a week? You think you can hang on? I mean, I'm curious. I'm, my main concerns are people here. On top of making sure I'm doing the right thing with the money. How long do you think y'all can operate? Monday, this coming Monday. This coming Monday.
I'm looking to check comes in tomorrow from Medicaid. That's gonna, will that change the whole situation?
We will continue to operate as long as we have the money to operate. And that's why I came to you tonight is, as Mr. Carter has pointed out, your RFP is two months out. Is that correct with what you said tonight? So going back to what you said, table it for X amount of time until you have it. You've given, given a timeline to figure this out with two months. That's the minimum of, gonna put it on Chill Hallie for two months? It's gonna be minimum if you gave us the money for two months? But whatever you do, it's gonna be a minimum of two months.
We're fully aware of that.
Okay, I'm just, I, I mean, I'm just clarifying.
All right, thank you. I'll amend my motion to amend it up to 20,000 and appropriate it for Chill Hallie or Saltville. Y'all listening or I'm gonna have to respond? I, I'm gonna amend my motion to appropriate up to $20,000 to set aside or do whatever for-
Emergency EMS funds.
Emergency EMS funds if Saltville shuts down and we have to use Chill Hallie as an option. If it's a viable option, then we have to use it. So that's my motion. I'm, uh, you know, I wanna add, I wanna keep service over and we're gonna get service. But I don't believe our good friends at Chill Hallie is gonna, I hope you, I hope you get your Medicare money. One reason I'm making a motion is if y'all do go with us, if you do help us, I understand everything you're saying, John, okay? I know you work for somebody and you gotta get approval. But I'm saying if Chill Hallie can't help us, then they have the bill that we were starting to point it out to, to bill Medicare off the bat. But I'm, my motion would be to amend up to $20,000 to set aside. If they fail, we have it here to help Chill Hallie cover the calls over there.
Just one question. Do you wanna, do you wanna identify, Chuck, cause I think maybe John pointed out, there may be some lines. Do you wanna do it to Chill Hallie or you wanna do it to a DERA agency?
Yes. A DERA, that's a, that's a, that's a very good call.
But it may, it may, yeah, it may be bland county entities.
Yeah, I do wanna amend it to that. That's a very good call.
Do what?
Is that the month of the rest of this year counting this fiscal year?
What do you want with it? How do you feel about it? You want a month and then you wanna do the fiscal year?
I think what you should think about is, is timing it with your RFP. So if you wanna just establish it as a dollar- just establish it as a dollar as needed, then if it takes you a month or two months, or that works out, then you have that ability within you.
Good with it?
Yeah.
Alright, that's my motion. You got it?
Second.
Alright, there's a motion in a second on the floor. I'm afraid to ask for discussion, any more discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What happens if Chilhauie County Council says we wanna stay away from this as far as possible? What do we do?
Well, as a deer, as a deer agency, you can't deny the cause, right? Well, and, and, and I don't mean this wrong, but you know, if I'm on the ship that's going down, and I see another ship that may be willing to help, and I hear that they're gonna need manpower, I'm looking to get on that ship that's not going down.
That is required, but to be part of their department is different.
Which leads to you all not being able to run ALS calls, correct?
No, I mean, they require firefighters, so it's worth seeing, they're probably not qualified for that motion.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Um, got, thank you. I, I, it's, it's just a, it's a big one. Uh, I, I feel like we could talk about it till this time tomorrow. We're, we're just trying to get some coverage in, you know, are we doing it right, we doing it wrong, we're doing the best, I think. The board knows, so.
You wanna say something before we take a vote?
I have just one thing, and I, I'll make it short.
Clear it up.
If something goes wrong, okay? I would ask Mr. Campbell how emergency procurement services are impacted, because that's what everybody's talking about, is if, if, if there's not the manpower, if there's not this or that, someone needs to address the emergency procurement and such service and how to enact.
Well, you know, obviously, in an emergency situation, I think that you've got some, some abbreviated timelines on the Public Procurement Act, so you could negotiate with providers that you know are in the area.
And when I say that, I'm talking days, I'm not talking weeks.
Hours, I mean, you're, you're talking life and death. I don't think, I don't think you get any more emergent than life and death, so that's...
Short amount of time.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think you'll have a hazard mitigation plan that was brought in by Mount Rogers PDC. That hazard mitigation plan is critical to this county to be able to receive FEMA funding in the event of a disaster. It has been approved by FEMA, it's been vetted by the Department of Emergency, and it is critical to this county for our future if we ever have a tornado or something like that, that plan being...
Did everybody get that? That's, that's on page 29 of our agenda, we were kind of waiting on Mr. Harrington to get here before that. Resolution pre-disaster hazard mitigation plan.
Based on his recommendation, I move me approve.
Motion in a second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Alright, Mr. Harrington?
Yes, sir. You're welcome, I'm probably gonna be public enemy number one here.
No, I think that's me.
We're gonna, we're gonna take five minutes, guys, just walk outside of Cool Hall. Let's do some personnel committee, let's do some committee things, we've got a few of them to cover. Personnel committee meeting on page 10, on the additional agenda. Oh, that's me. Yeah, that, actually, that's, yeah. So, we met, okay, is that enough? That's all we need to say about that?
Hey!
We met, we went into closed session and discussed, um, A1 personnel matters, and that was the end of our meeting. Uh, yes, sir. We got, um, sure, Rick, that's down the line here, insurance.
We'll give everybody a chance to catch up. We did have an insurance committee meeting, two things on the agenda, the first one was, we got the renewal rates for health insurance. Fortunately, I mean, on the good news, the rates came in, generally, people talk about expected 10% increase, the rate came in at a 1.7% increase. So, the committee had discussed the insurance plan that's being offered, the current structure is, for the local choice, the state plan, you have to contribute 80% of employee only. We currently contribute 79% for employee plus one and family, so Mr. Atkins made a recommendation in a second and approved unanimously to recommend adopting the, the new insurance rates and the same pay structure as we currently have for this year.
Committee recommendation, is there any more discussion? I think that was based on the budget, walking those numbers through.
Yes.
So, it's going up 40%.
1.7%.
1.7. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor?
That was a good job. The, the second part was even, was a simple one. The, we, the county offers a nationwide 457 plan, which is a retirement plan. They can offer professional services to employees that are contributing to that plan, there's no cost to the county, so, but we had to adopt, make a motion to adopt giving them permission to offer those services to any employee who contributes to the nationwide 457 plan. Their, their plan is called the Pro Account, and again, no cost to the county, and not required, but if an employee that contributes wants to, to pay for those services, they have that option. And that was a committee recommendation, and that was unanimous.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? You bet. Budget committee, page 34 through 37, that was me again, but I think we're gonna pass that off, maybe. Michael, you wanna do that, or Kelly, y'all kind of presented those numbers in the beginning of the budget committee, if that's, or I can read it, whichever prefers.
I can do it. There's a meeting on March 5th, a few things were considered. First one, Sheriff had presented a transfer request, as shown on page 34, an amount of $1,445 from Solvo, two office spots, and it's due to some vacancy savings, and they're allowed to, to make that transfer. They've exceeded their $4,000, we've done these a few times before, so any, any transfer request from them now comes directly to the board. After hearing that, Mr. Blevins made a motion to recommend it, Ray second, and it's a committee recommendation for consideration.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Next item was an actual budget amendment. Sheriff had requested in Fund 744 under special investigation, that, that provides for part wages for one of the employees who is reimbursed from the, from the DEA, and the necessary funds to allow the continued use of that for the remainder of the year, $6,000, we added in the FICA, which is 459, that brings the total amount to 6,459. That does change the bottom line number from 88,358,151 to 88,364,610. Mr. Blevins, Mr. Ray actually made that motion, Mr. Blevins second, that's also a committee recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
The next one was a budget request, transfer within the board supervisors line item. Basically, it's to cover advertising costs and court point attorneys. So, if you look on top of page 35, total amount $6,800, 800 of it from traveling, convention education into advertising, 1,700 from telecommunications into advertising, 300 from travel miles into advertising, and 4,000 out of the security line item to cover the court point attorney cost. That totals 6,800. Mr. Blevins made a motion, Mr. Ray second, unanimous, up for consideration.
Any more discussion on that transfer? All those in favor? If somebody opposes, I'm not looking both ways, you can just holler out, huh?
Next one is a budget transfer for the maintenance department in the amount of $4,400 on these, tried to move it from building to building, we didn't want to confuse the building, so county building from electricity to repair and maintenance, $1,000, courthouse from electricity to laundry janitorial, $1,500. Again, courthouse service contracts into repair and maintenance, $1,500, and for the health department service contracts into water and sewer, an amount of $400. Mr. Blevins made a motion, Mr. Ray second, as a committee recommendation.
$4,400. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Next one is a larger one, this is our water and sewer department. Just a quick, you know, these, these water purchases are always up and down, we're fortunate that when you have an increase in one line item, it often reflects in another, so that's all part of the, the factor in when you purchase some water from the purveyors that we do. This one's in the amount of a total of $43,500, all in the water and sewer department. First ones, the first three come out of town, Mary, that was a line set up for their purchases, we've recognized some opportunity there. So, the request for one is to move it into the Merrelat line item in the amount of $1,100, the next one to Apple Valley in the amount of $19,600, the third one into the Poor Valley line item for $2,600, the next one into East Hunger Main, East Hunger Mother Park Main in $16,700, and then the last two, again, Alhanger Mother, walkers, Ebenezer line item into fuel for $3,000, and the second one from the same line item into uniforms for $500. That totals 43,500. Mr. Blevins made that motion, Mr. Ray second, and then it was a committee recommendation.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
The next one was a request on a tax refund from Mr. Ronaldale and Francis P. Horton in the amount of $1,184.05. It's identified tax 956A75, and code section is Purdons 581, 3219.5, it's a property exemption for taxes for disabled veterans. There was communication within the committee in the future, basically requesting additional information from the commissioner's office to detail them more so than what we have, but after that discussion, Mr. Ray made a motion to recommend that tax refund in the amount of $1,184, Mr. Blevins second, it's unanimous recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
The next item, at our board meeting in February, there's a request that was made to basically video some budget committee meetings and make those available to citizens, I brought that item up for discussion, committee, and I'll read exactly what it says, committee stated, "All meetings are open to the public, and any board member wishes to attend." It's the opinion of the committee, that videoing the meetings not necessary, that's, that's a response.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would just like to, I, I respect the, the recommendation of the committee, and I understand, you know, what they're saying, that it's open and anybody can attend. However, as I stated previously, with over 30,000 citizens, it's almost impossible for a lot of people to be able to be here who would like to be here. And as we've mentioned, it's a very difficult budget year, lots of major decisions are gonna be made, they're not gonna be easy, and I think that it's only fair to the taxpayers who give the money to, to have the visibility and for it not to be veiled as to how those decisions are made. And I know that we don't have anything to hide, so in that spirit, I would like to propose a motion that we do video the budget meetings, and that, that would begin by April the 9th.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one of the issues that, that I have, I mean, they're, they're open to the public, anyone can come, we also have some people who regularly attend. A lot of times during the budget process, and Charlie, if you think back to when you were in the budget process, when departments are presenting their budgets, a lot of those budget discussions revolve around personnel. Now, if somebody has sat in there, I mean, obviously, you have the discussion, but, but I think there's a lot of times when people are discussing, this is what we're requesting, and this is what we would do if we had the money, and this is what we would do if we didn't, to discuss names and, and of actual individual employees, I, I think obviously is a concern for me. But like I said, they're open to everyone, we meet, they're advertised, the minutes of those meetings are, are put into the, to the notes, so anybody can look at the notes, anybody can read, but to me, it's, it's just, just not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman?
May I ask, Rick, but if you're there attending, you're gonna hear that discussion anyway, right? So, why would it, why would it be a conflict?
Mr. Chairman? Do you wanna respond to the answer, Rick? I don't know.
I guess if I think back over the past, and, and lord knows, we've had a, had a long difficult meeting already, but as an example, in dealing with things from the way back in 16, from the Smithland Regional Library, I have a feeling that people who, who were sitting in those meetings, discussing budget and, and other things, I, I don't believe, would that conversation have happened if that was a videotape meeting?
Well, but I guess, and I know we need to move along, but the, the pivoting thing is that anybody can attend, and it would be open for them to hear.
Yes, so if anybody who is that interested, I, I don't know, should have been, but if they don't, you know, they have an option, the, the minutes of the meetings are there, every, every board meeting, we go over the notes, everybody has the right to ask questions, I mean, it's, which, which the newspaper is more than happy to, to pick some things out and write, write articles about, it's just, I mean, in the, in the effort to be transparent about things, I mean, are you gonna start videotaping water and sewer meetings when you're talking about someone who's behind in the water bill? Are you, I mean, it just, there are lots of issues.
I think that we're taking this off track, because the budget committee is probably one of the most important, in my opinion, of this whole thing. And so, you know, I just, the motion is on the floor, and I guess it's something besides.
There's a motion in, there's a motion in the second on the floor, is there any more discussion? Any more discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add, I, I dug through other localities and, and in our area, I didn't go outside our area, but couldn't find anybody that tapes committee meetings or, I just, I, I just, I don't see the need for it. It's, this thing that there's a veil, or everything's open, I don't, I don't understand.
I guess the point is to say, there isn't, there shouldn't be a veil.
There isn't.
And in that regard, we don't have anything to hide, so, so that's, that's just my discussion on it.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, I mean, I, if I had to guess, budget committee meetings, every Tuesday and Thursday, starting in March, goes through usually end of April, first of May, something like that. Of course, we're all on committee meetings, on committees, you know, like I said, it's, they're open to the public, the newspaper can come and sit in those meetings if they would like to, you know, but what frustrates me is the implication that somebody's trying to hide something, and I'm on the, the appointment committee that helps appoint people to committees, and when I go through and look at committees, and who's attending their appointment meetings and things like that, I, I would encourage every board member to attend what they're assigned to. I mean, as an example, we, we have, oh, I just, I have a problem with the intonation, and it's open to anyone who, who wants to come.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Video taping the budget meetings.
Okay, we're betting one in favor.
Opposed? Opposed?
Yes, sir. The next item for that meeting was the contract modification agreement for the odd and services. Currently, the county utilizes Robson Bond Cox, there's an attachment from a modification on page thirty-seven. Originally, it's for three years, with an option to extend, re-subsequent. You have, I think I have sent some emails out over the last week, provided some clarification. I think you guys have somewhere in front of you some of the responses back, pointed out, clarified. After discussion with the budget committee, it's ready, made a motion, recommend proof of contract modification, Mr. Blavens second, as a committee recommendation to modify the agreement in the amounts as identified on page thirty-seven for odd year thirty, June thirty, twenty nineteen, fee not to exceed fifty-eight eight fifty, June thirty, twenty twenty, fee not to exceed sixty thousand six hundred, and June thirty, twenty twenty-one, fee not to exceed sixty-two thou- thousand four hundred dollars with Robson Bond Cox.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that this isn't unusual to do contracts without automatic time, however, I think that, and I know we're going to discuss some other contracts that are seen in the news that go on. I think personally, in, with the Virginia procurement law, I just like the fact of having that go out for bid every three years without automatically, and that's just my personal statement on it.
Okay. That was a committee recommendation, is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Chairman, that's all that came out of that meeting.
We had Building and Grounds, Mr. Stevenson, in page thirty-eight.
Can I borrow your book?
Yeah, boy.
For excuse for supervisor, I think.
I heard that earlier.
Yeah, I've been told that. So, a meeting of Sneak Eyebore Supervisor, Building and Grounds Committee was held at County Office Building, away in the February twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, at three thirty B. And it wasn't yet. I'm just breaking there. Me and Rick and Roscoe and I called meeting in order, Michael Carter, County Minister, Area Department of Committee, proposals received for hack, head back services for the county. The proposals received were from Cook's Mechanical Service, located in Lockville, Tennessee, and Train, located in Kingsport, Tennessee. Both services provided, providers presented a proposal to the committee allowing for any questions to be asked. Cook's Mechanical proposed a total cost of thirty-six thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars per year, and Train proposed a total cost of thirty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars per year. After listening to the proposals by both service providers, Robson and District Supervisor Rick Blavens made a motion to recommend accepting the proposal from Train and enter into a one-year agreement in amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars, which includes over-provened maintenance service for the Morse Building, McCounty, McCounty Health, McCounty Service, so on and so on. Agreement shall renew automatically for the successive periods of one year until terminated. Call second the motion, I'll read the remarks.
Any recommendations, is there any questions? Any discussion?
I was assuming the, the agreement had the, the grounds for termination for either party.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah. All right, we ready? Michael Carter, County Administrator, they have dated committee concerning a roof leak at the Morse Building. Mr. Carter stated, the contractor had looked at the problem and would be providing a repair quote in the coming days.
Chairman, I have an update to that.
Sure.
About fifteen hundred dollars, so I've notified contractor, go ahead, he's got to bring a lift in, he just can't scale up the size of this brick building for some orders. We'll get that ready here, up to the shoulder.
All right. Mr. Carter stated that Senate deal fifteen fifteen, which is a deal that was introduced to convey the Morrison Building to Smith County, has passed through both the Senate and the House without any objections, and currently, currently was waiting the governor of Virginia signature for approval. Conveyance of the building is to be effective July the first, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Carter also stated the animal shelter was experiencing some issues with the heating system, and informed the committee staff was looking into several options to resolve the issue. Distinct information will be presented at a future committee meeting. I hate committee meetings. Having no other business discussed, Chairman, District Supervisor Phil Stacey adjourned the meeting. He did not. I did not that well.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
I have a comment to make. I have been asking for the last year now about the status of this building and what we were going to do. It would appear that the Southern Member Board is not needed because we have not one time discussed this building and what was going to happen when our rent ran out, but yet a bill was entered into the House and passed for us to get this building given to us. I don't think, I think someone here had to be communicating them that that is what we desired, but yet we never had a discussion on it, let alone a vote.
But in the previous building grounds, yes.
But the whole board never talked about it.
Those minutes were presented before.
I went to Richmond twice for this House Bill fifteen fifteen, sat five hours, turned around, come back home one night, but, I mean, I, it, it's, it's been discussed in minutes, previously voted on minutes, I just.
I've sat right here and asked several times for us as a full board to talk about it, and not once has it been said, well, we're talking about it committee.
I'm not on building grounds and I knew, but.
Well, I'm just.
Reading the committee minutes and.
And I'm pretty sure we discussed in either, I almost remember a discussion in somewhere along the lines that, that, that Mr. Carrick was drafting the bill, at, at full board, full board level, if I don't, I'm not mistaken at some point.
Maybe we need to provide that.
Well, we were, we were leaving a meeting the night Carrick called and said, I need you here in the morning.
Yeah.
Was it a budget?
Was that, okay. Well, I, Charlie, I, I, I knew about it, I didn't know everybody didn't, it's not an intentional type of a thing. I, I feel like if, if you would have been asking during the process of this, getting this bill together, it wouldn't have just been glanced off and not discussed. I, I don't know where the, that came into play.
I have asked several times, because, I'm, I'm of the opinion that this building, we, I know one time I asked was what's it going to cost to bring this building up to, to repair level, to be a, you know, that's the heating, the air conditioning, the roofing, there's several problems, that we're going to have to spend some money to upgrade this building. How much is that going to cost us? If we go to turn this building down in fifteen years, with the amount of, of asbestos, the amount of lead-based paint, it's going to cost us a fortune to get rid of it. You know, we should have had, we as a full board should have had an option to talk about what our options were, do we really want this building? But instead, it's being given to us and what's the answer if we don't want this building? We, we were behind the eight ball on it. Well, if we, if we don't get this building and they don't renew our lease, we have nowhere to go. We weren't behind the eight ball too. A year and a half ago, we knew this building lease was running out, and we chose not to do, not to discuss it. And I think that's what we have as a problem, we choose to, to create the crisis.
That's not true, that man's been entertaining conversations with, with the health, with.
He's been entertaining, have you?
I've heard it, I've, I've, I've read it in some of his minutes because I've heard it.
Then why do we all show up if we, if he's going to handle it? And I don't mean this wrong, Michael, because we have to, few members of the board know about it. I mean, I think that, that's something that the whole board should have said a yea or nay. You know, for me to read in the minutes here that we've been give, we're being given this building, the governor signs it.
You see, every little thing comes across the house that everybody's.
Well, I, I can't say every little thing, but. I, maybe we could look back in minutes to, you know, I don't know, it's not a, it's not a thing of evidence, that's not what I'm getting at, but I, Charlie, I didn't know that you didn't know about it, I knew about it, I figured everybody knew about it, we talk about it, I, you know, I just.
I just think it's mistaken what we're doing.
Okay, well, we've, we've got the building, we've got that, we've, it's, it's been through the House and been through the Senate, and with a stipulation of up to two years to supply heat to the building, and so that's, that's where we are.
Do we have any cost, does the building grounds have any cost of what it's going to cost to bring the building up to where we want it to be?
What does it need?
We got to put a ball over you, Dan, we talked about that.
Has, we already have the AC, we just replaced the chiller last summer.
No, we don't, we have, we have parts of this building that have heat or air conditions.
We, we got to put about it, I've got estimates, six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Just minimum, we're going out for bonding to build a multiple thousand, million dollar facility?
Let me suggest one other thing too, there, there are some legal implications here. If in fact the state conveys the property to the county, under the code, under fifteen point two eighteen oh three, this county, this locality's board has to approve that deed of conveyance. So if in fact, you know, there are objections here, after it, we probably do need to take an affirmative vote about whether or not you wish to accept this conveyance of this real estate from the state.
Not until it's conveyed.
Not until the deed's prepared, but, but ultimately, I think you probably want to communicate that before parties start taking the steps to make that happen.
Well, you know you have to vote, you just need to subject.
Well, but I, I mean, on the record, you have to do that, because I can't, I can't sign off on the deed as a county attorney, accepting that conveyance of real estate until this locality has approved that, that conveyance.
I'd like to motion that the state raises it to us, and we accept that conveyance. The reason I do that is I understand what Mr. Akins is saying as far as the buildings in, but also this is a four-story building, it would probably cost a billion dollars if you had to do it. So, you know, I, I, I for one, thank Mr. Carrick though, I think it's what he done, he's very, very gracious. I think Mr. Carter, I agree with Mr. Campbell, so there's a motion now to accept it if it's given to us.
I second. Got a motion and a second on the floor?
Got a motion and a second.
Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Accepting the building if given to us. Is that what we need, Mr. Campbell?
You need to record the vote, obviously, as.
All right.
I don't know. Did you vote in favor of accepting this building if it was given to us? We're going down to call them.
I feel like that we don't know all the answers as far as what it's going to cost us, so, no, I don't vote in favor of it.
Rick Blavens?
Yes.
Phil Stevenson?
Yes.
Todd Dishner?
Yes.
Charlie Akins?
No.
And Ray?
Yes.
Roscoe?
Okay. You got what you had?
Charlie, what I mean?
Where are we going? Page forty, we're going over the ordinance committee, the meeting minutes.
Okay. The ordinance committee met on March the fifth, and County Administrator Michael Carter stated that during a previous meeting, the ordinance committee reviewed the comprehensive plan for Smith County, and since that time, requests have been received for citizens to apply for revenue share project with VDOT. Mr. Carter explained to the committee that VDOT is looking to the comprehensive plan for revenue share projects using a ranking system. Mr. Carter stated that there are more than five hundred and thirty roads within the county, and in order to ensure identification of potential upgrades to these roads, there needs to be documentation in the comprehensive plan that could be utilized by VDOT. Mr. Carter suggested comprehensive plan include a paragraph containing various rural area projects with an attached priority listing for both revenue share projects and road improvements for commercial and industrial development. County Attorney Jeff Campbell stated it was his opinion, the committee could request for the planning commission to incorporate the request once changes were discussed and agreed upon by the planning commission. A public hearing would need to be held to adopt those changes. Southwell District Roscoe Call made a motion to send a request by the committee to the planning commission to incorporate the more than five hundred and thirty roads within the county as an attachment to the comprehensive plan for Smith County. Actin District Supervisor Charles Actin seconded the motion, all agreed unanimously.
So committee recommendation, is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
The second item of business was County Attorney Jeff Campbell stated that it had been brought to his attention that Smith County Code does not reflect the correct transient occupancy tax information. After further review, Mr. Campbell stated he felt it was in the best interest of Smith County to re-adopt the transient occupancy test, tax ordinance of five percent, which would require the Board of Supervisors to advertise and hold a public hearing. This does not change the current rate, just allows for the proper information to be incorporated into the code. Southwell District Supervisor Roscoe Call made a motion to recommend setting a public hearing for April ninth, twenty nineteen, Board of Supervisors meeting, to re-adopt the ordinance as needed for the transient occupancy tax. Actin District Supervisor Charles Actin seconded the motion, all agreed unanimously.
That is a committee recommendation, did we, did we do it for April ninth a while ago, that was not this, right?
Six, your fine.
Okay. So.
It's at five thirty.
So we got a committee recommendation, so whatever time guys works best on the calendar, is that what we need to set a time?
Chairman, that's, I guess, six o'clock.
Any discussion, any more discussion, is that good to everybody? Need a motion to accept that and set the time, or?
Is that for the ninth?
Yes. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Kelly, thank you for the good notes in here, you really do a whole lot right. Personnel Committee, forty-one to forty-three. No recommendations, we just met, went over Assistant County Administrator applications for that meeting. That was on, whenever it was, February the twentieth, then we met again the twenty-seventh. We met the, Mr. Carter stated, Board Supervisors, on February, there was questions concerning the proposed new operating hours of the animal shelter. Mr. Stevenson informed the committee that he had received several complaints from constituents concerning the operating hours due to the work hours of the constituents and the operating hours of the shelter. It was problematic for them to bring a stray animal that had been dropped off of their property. Mr. Turman, Animal Control Officer, presented the revised hours of operation shown, attached in figure one on page forty-three. After discussion, that was a unanimous committee recommendation to change those hours. If you look on forty-three, you probably ought to familiarize yourself with that, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, adoption and viewing and reclamation from one to four-thirty, animal intake Monday through Friday, eight AM to four-thirty, Saturday, eight, animal intake, Saturday, eight AM to four-thirty, or Saturday, eight AM to four-thirty, intake only, and closed on Sundays, closed daily for lunch, noon to one. So I think when we first presented that, it looked like those hours, we still had missed days, but that's it, open six days a week, so. That was a committee recommendation to approve these hours, so any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm sort of wishy-washy on all of it, it looks to me like the only time you can adopt the pets between one and four-thirty, so if you had a, you know, if you'd like to bring your kids to adopt a pet, you really, I almost think we need a few, an hour or two on Saturdays, or, I'm, I'm not happy with the adoption hours. If, if our goal. If, if our goal is to be a kill-free kennel, um, I just don't think we give enough hours for the public to adopt the pet.
And Charlie, I'm not dismissing your concerns, it's just ding-dang, it's so hard to get everybody's request in. And, and I'm, you know, if there's something we need to bring back, I know we've, we've had like three meetings with Mr. Turman on trying to get these hours ironed out, um.
Can I shed some light?
Sure, sure.
I, you know, when you come up, Charlie, I, I'm like you, but when we come up and sit down with him, uh, his, his, his response was as far as that, their intake on cats and dogs anyway. And the regulations they're going through now, uh, today's actually a regulation, Dad comes and turned down, they have thirty kennels there, and anybody jump me in here if I mess up, uh, they've got thirty kennels. So Houston, they could keep thirty dogs. Well, now the dog's feet can't get wet.
Yeah.
I'm, I mean, I'm serious.
I know, I've heard that.
It's a lot.
I've heard that.
And, uh, you know, uh, his thing was adoption, was people coming in to adopt, he just don't have enough help to handle any more adoption hours. Now, those was talked about, and I get it, uh, you know, and even when it come to accepting animals coming in, he may not be able to accept so many and, and, and keep them alive because it was only the fifteen cages. But now, the problem I, the people I spoke with, uh, we're all around cats in the county. I don't know whether y'all know whether or not, uh, but, you know, he, he, his, his talk is he's really up against it. His reason, he didn't expand any on the adoption hours, and that's why he didn't do it on Saturday. What we tried to do was make it work. Somebody, one lady told me she had fed cats for a week, eight or ten, and couldn't get in to get rid of them. So, you know, even though they take them in now, they may not be able to be up for adoption because we don't have cages for them.
There's, there's a property near a piece of property that I have that has about nineteen stray cats that are just there.
But to answer your question, Bill's comment was he just can't handle any more time as far as any more adoption hours.
I, I would think that'd be what he'd want to be doing, was adopting them out and try to, if anything, have more adoption hours. You know, I mean, like I say, I'm sort of neutral, I just wanted to voice that.
Yeah, I get it.
Well, that, and I, you know, I, I appreciate your concern on it, it's just, uh, that's, that's one of those moving target type of deals, it's, um, but anyway, that's committee recommendation, and is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Keep closing my place. Uh, Solid Waste, Mr. Ray.
This is one where I ask, please don't shoot the messenger.
Uh-oh.
Um, Solid Waste Committee met on March fourth, uh, at four thirty, myself, Mr. Stevenson, and Mr. Atkins, and basically, the topic discussed, Tri-City's waste paper had closed, and it's a fish, that's the facility that handles the recycling of our paper and plastics for Smith County. Mr. Carter stated the closest facility to haul these products, products is located in Roanoke, and that, uh, would not be cost-effective for the county. Mr. Carter informed the committee that Washington County, City of Bristol, had communicated that they have suspended recycling services until further notice. After discussion, after discussion, Act, Atkins, District Charlie, uh, Charlie Atkins made a motion to recommend suspending recycling services for Smith County until further notice. North Fork District Supervisor Phil Stevenson seconded the motion, all agreed unanimously. And just to follow up, I think we've all seen, um, statements from City of Bristol, Washington County, you know, hands are tied, we have nowhere to take it. Uh, but, you know, I hate, absolutely hate that we can't provide the service for the county, that, that, you know, when, you know, when you look at the amount that we have and what Bristol and Washington County has, if they can't find a place for theirs and we have as little as we have, we're definitely not going to find somebody that's interested in ours. So, and, um, but, and I, and I, and I'm on the record, and I think all of us would agree that as soon as an option opens up, we're in, but until then, what do you do? We don't know what to do, we can't store it. So that's the recommendation.
And that's why we said suspend instead of quit, because if it does open up, we will still have the containers, we'll still have what it needs to start doing it again.
Well, I, and it just probably, I bet it wasn't, how long has this happened? How long has that been closed? Is the paper, the recycling, how long?
They closed.
March nineteenth, I mean, February nineteenth.
It is in February. It's one, become that Washington County?
Well, just.
Or Tri-City?
Yeah. I, I bet it wasn't a week ago. Man, county don't even recycle. We put all our paper out there and they dump it all in one hole anyway, so I guess it's, recycling plants not operational, that's what.
Well, the misconception with what we had done is that, yeah, we do dump it in one hole, that's because we combined it all into making one load.
Right.
And people see that in the past, that material being dumped out into one area, that's, that's accurate, because we took that, we compacted it into another machine to where we could haul more efficiently down the road with that, that material, so they didn't see the full picture.
Usually not. Um, as far as I know, Kelly, other than you need to do is an update on the Back of the Dragon, I think.
We need to vote on that recommendation.
I'm sorry, but that was a committee recommendation, we, any more discussion? All those in favor? Do it stay tonight?
Just wanted to give you guys an update on the Back of the Dragon project. There was kind of a little bit of a wait until we got notification from VDOT to pursue the right of way, which we have now been given. I contacted one appraiser, um, took him a couple weeks, he has now decided he doesn't want to do it. So we spoke to, Michael and I had a meeting last week with VDOT, but VDOT has given us a list of appraisers that they approved, because it actually has to be approved by VDOT, um, and we contacted them today. They're coming by to pick up their information on Thursday to be able to appraise that property. Once that's, um, out of the way, it gives us right to, um, negotiate, um, so that's where we're at. They also gave us a timeline, um, for the project. Um, we're on track, um, as long as construction begins March twenty twenty, we're on track with that. Um, we've also, uh, been in contact with the Tobacco Commission because that's part of the funding. Um, we will be able to do an extension to the grant. They said that's not a problem. They usually see that on these types of projects, so we should be good on that.
I'm trying to write as fast, you do minutes a lot quicker than me. So the timeline, we're good.
Yes.
As long as we start.
Construction phase needs to begin March of twenty twenty. And that is dependent upon, Michael and I, when we had the conversation with VDOT, that does depend on the right of way with, um, that appraisal. I mean, there's certain guidelines we have to adhere to with that. If he asks for an astronomical amount, we have to go back and say, can you get this approved, and that type of stuff.
Okay. So the appra, the, the appraisal of the property within a week?
No.
Did you say?
They'll pick up the information.
No, they're picking up the information Thursday to appraise the property. Typically, it's thirty to forty-five days. We've kind of tried to push them to say, okay, we need it as soon as you can get it. VDOT has to review all that, so it has to be appraised, and the appraiser has to approve the appraisal, and then VDOT has to approve it also. So there's still a process that has to go through.
For the appraisal, this week?
Yeah. For him to give us a, a figure to work off of.
Well, I'd just like to say, since, I, I don't know if anybody else has any questions, I, I had a pretty frantic telephone call from Tourism yesterday stating that we were really holding this project up, and that we were the only ones that was causing it to be delayed, and engineering was ready, uh, VDOT was ready, something, because of the name, we were holding the, the whole project up. And I said, I don't know where your information is, but I know where I get mine from, and let me get my information together and all. So that, I, I just want that, I appreciate that that was even on the agenda tonight, because I didn't, I asked about that when I came up here this evening, and then saw that was going to be on the agenda. So everything's on track, we're on line, we're on time. Uh, Tobacco Commission will extend if what? What's the case of thing?
We have a grant, it's eighty twenty.
They'll extend the grant.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
It has to occur in September.
Right, we have an extension until September of this year, so once, and then that'll have to have another extension applied for.
They got also has money in it, they call it TA grant, and they're more than willing to extend that until that.
Yeah.
This isn't news today.
Right. This is kind of an expectation of these type of projects.
Well, and I, I, I appreciate that.
You can assure whoever that.
There's no holdup.
Guys, I, I, it's, the world we live in, negativity can travel at the speed of light, so I, um, I'll, I'll relay these messages that I got here tonight, that no, that's not the case, and we are, it's a positive outlook, and things are moving forward, and things are on track and on time, and, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Um, as far as I know, I've covered the agenda, um, I did cover it. Supervisors' comment time. Ms. White, do you remember which end of the table I started on last time?
Mr. Chairman, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Do you want to go first, or we can go the other way? It doesn't matter to me.
I'll be glad to go first.
Sure.
I would just like to state that this evening, I'm, I'm in a very unpleasant dialogue. I am elected, I will represent, I just feel the way I feel, I need to, I feel like I have the right to express my opinion freely without threat or criticism. And if we don't have that environment, then we have a problem.
Uh, didn't see that, I don't know if that's, is that?
No, you didn't see it.
Okay.
There was a follow-up to it.
Well, I, I would just like, if we can, if that's a side note, then that's a side note. If it's something involving the, the actions of our Board of Supervisors meeting, well, it's citizens, it's supervisor comment time, you can say what you want to, I apologize for that. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. Levens?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to make a recommendation, uh, for the Rye Valley Water Authority, Mr. Joe Blankenship, who is on that board and has done an excellent job, and I'd like to really thank him for all his hard work. Uh, he, he's moving, uh, to the Weth County side, and in conversation with the Rye Valley Water Authority, uh, I would like to recommend Dan A. Slump, Jr., to replace Mr. Blankenship for the remainder of his term, uh, and then to fall into that cycle. I believe it was Dan A. Slump, Jr., to replace Mr. Blankenship, uh, who is in the process of moving. Also, uh, just.
You need a.
Well, no, I guess that's, that's the informal motion.
Yeah. You may wish to second that. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I know them both very well, and I think they're both doing a job, and from right there, so. Uh, all those in favor?
And, and one last thing, uh, I was contacted and, and I'll, I'll give, um, Mr. Carter the information that, uh, passed along to Mr. Williams, had to take a look at a, a situation, uh, over on Dry Fork Road, involving some, um, well, uh, farm, uh, smells, a number of cattle, things like that, for them, uh, for Mr. Williams to look at it, not to see if there's any issues that might lay in the ordinance, um, but just to make you aware of that. Like I said, that was on Dry Fork Road.
Uh, Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Ray?
No.
Mr. Call?
Say so.
Well, I, I appreciate everybody's participation. I know we can't all be on the same page all the time, that's what keeps the world rolling around. I do think we've covered some, some very, very big things tonight, and I know that's not even popular. Uh, I guess our highlight of the night was the little girl coming in, we got to give her recognition, so that, that tickled us all. Um, so everybody be safe, and we'll stay in touch. Thank you. Till the twenty-eighth. We're continuing our meeting till March the twenty-eighth.